... members of the council to use social media, provided that this does not disturb the business of this meeting. I would like to welcome members of the public in attendance. Wonderful to see you all, thank you. And it's a pleasure to have you here, and I hope you find it interesting and that you see a healthy debate on the various items of business that we've got to discuss. I do want to remind you all that this meeting is being webcast live, although I have the right to suspend filming if the need arises. And also, I'd like to remind you that if there are any interruptions to the proceedings of this meeting, understanding order 5.1, I have the right to ask people to stop any disruption and ultimately to ask for people to be removed from the council chamber and public gallery, but I sincerely hope that it does not come to this, because we had an excellent meeting last time, and we hope for a peaceful meeting and a proper conduct of business today. Item one, apologies for absence. Apologies have been received from Mary Angel, Edward Hawkins, Julie Isles, Wyatt Ramsdale, Becky Rush, Rose Thorne, Fiona White, John Fury, Ivona Lay and Charlotte Morley. Anyone else? Thank you. Item two, the minutes on page 11 of your agenda. May I sign the minutes of the council held on 21st May 2019 as a correct record of the meeting? Thank you. Item three, declarations of interest. Are there any declarations of disclosable pecuniary interests, significant personal interests or prejudicial interests that members wish to make at this point? Dr Povey.
Declare an interest as a trustee of Surrey Health Society, Chair.
Thank you, Dr Povey. Anyone else? Thank you. Item four, chairman's announcements. As is my wont, most of my announcements are in the green book because I like to expedite the meeting whilst having a clear phrase for democracy. However, I would like to welcome the Surrey youth mayor, Jacob Wren. Jacob, would you stand up? I am delighted that Surrey has a youth mayor now. It's about time that we got youngsters involved with everything, and it's terrific, Jacob, that you were elected. Many congratulations. Welcome to the meeting. And we have another first today. I'm delighted to confirm that I've been slightly instrumental in arranging a concert with the Yehudi Menuin School, who are coming here this afternoon at 2.30 for a free concert, and I am so excited that this is actually happening after many years of association with this wonderful school. I hope whoever comes enjoys it. Item five, the leader's statement. I call Tim Oliver, the leader of the council, to make the statement. May I remind you that members can make comments as well as questions on the leader's statement, and the leader can respond at the end. Thank you. Leader.
Mr Chairman, before I deliver my statement, I would also like to welcome members of Extinction Rebellion in the public gallery. We will be debating a number of important environmental issues this morning, and I'm very grateful to some of their representatives who I met with recently for their input, and I'll pick up on this a little later. Mr Chairman of members, I have said before in this chamber that there can be no greater priority for any of us than turning around our children's services. I spoke in March about the green shoots of recovery, following an Ofsted monitoring visit, and I was tremendously encouraged by the follow-up visit last month, which focused on the single point of access, the early help hub and contact centre team. The feedback we received is a testament to the rapid progress the team has made in over the past year, and whilst there is more to do, continuing to improve our children's services will remain our highest priority. I am sure we would all want to congratulate our excellent staff in getting us to this point. Mr Chairman, as you will be aware, there will be a paper going to next week's cabinet meeting that trails the second part of the library's consultation, which kicked off in September, and builds upon the consultation we did with our residents last autumn. Since then, extensive officer-level conversations have taken place across each of the districts and boroughs, and will continue to do so ahead of the launch. The way libraries are used has changed dramatically since they were built in the 1950s, and the key aspect of the consultation is how we can modernise the service and provide opportunities for everyone to learn, access information, acquire new skills and be involved in their communities. Mr Chairman, one of the commitments in our Surrey 2030 vision is for journeys across the county to be easier and safer. In support of this, we have undertaken an important piece of work, which has seen Surrey's partners and residents work together to discuss our shared ambitions around reducing congestion, improving air quality and promoting independence. The Rethinking Transport Project is now coming to the end of its discovery phase, but through these conversations, representatives of a number of partners, including businesses, health organisations and transport providers, have shared their views on how Surrey's future transport system can contribute to achieving our 2030 ambitions and health and wellbeing priorities. A number of innovative solutions have been suggested as part of this first phase: reducing the need to travel through smarter working, embracing emerging technology and encouraging sustainable and active modes of transport. The next phase will explore how these potential solutions might work in practice and highlights many of the key themes that are important to tackling climate change, which I know is something our residents care deeply about. On the environment more broadly, I'm pleased that colleagues across the chamber have embraced my suggestion of an environmental charter. The Select Committee has set up a cross-party task group and is planning an ambitious programme of work involving experts from academia and industry as well as key local communities and partners. This will help us understand the scale of the issues facing Surrey. We must take action to identify the threats to our natural environment and identify ways we can have the biggest impact to ensure Surrey remains a great place to live, to work and enjoy. Indeed, we will shortly be passing a motion put by Mike Goodman, the cabinet member for the environment, declaring a climate emergency. Perhaps just as importantly, the charter will contain positive and practical steps that this council will take to help avert the seriousness of the situation our society faces. It requires all of us to think about our actions and behaviours as leaders of this organisation, as community representatives and also as residents going about our daily lives. That's why we will be working with a number of partners, including the University of Surrey, and I look forward to receiving the Select Committee's draft call for action later in the year and a debate at council on how we can take this forward. Alongside the Select Committee's work, we are developing our commissioning approach to encourage communities to come forward with ideas on how to tackle the issues we face at a local level, be that air quality, waste reduction or congestion. We know a lot of fantastic initiatives are already thriving in our communities, and we would like to celebrate and indeed encourage these initiatives. Working with businesses to try to secure sponsorship, we want to engage local groups to showcase what we can do by working together and acting differently. We will be launching this towards the end of the month, and I hope all members will actively support this initiative. Indeed, wouldn't it be terrific if each of us were to put forward an idea to pilot in our own communities? This is an issue for the whole county and beyond that cuts across many areas, including transport and health. An indirectly linked to that is the launch of Surrey's health and wellbeing strategy. This has been made possible thanks to the unprecedented levels of collaboration with the NHS, district and boroughs, the voluntary and charitable and community sector, the police, and it focuses on delivering better health and wellbeing outcomes for people in Surrey. To remind members, the strategy has three key priorities: helping people in Surrey to lead healthy lives, supporting the mental health and emotional wellbeing of people in Surrey and supporting people in Surrey to fulfil their potential. Mr Chairman, life expectancy is broadly based as much on actions taken by local government as it is on lifestyle decisions taken by an individual and medical interventions combined. Through this strategy, we're signalling an important shift to a more preventative approach, addressing root causes of poor health and wellbeing, including things like poor housing and the environment, and not simply focusing on treating the symptoms. The draft implementation plan will be finished over the coming months, and I very much look forward to signing this off at the Health and Wellbeing Board later this year. Mr Chairman, there will be no let-up in the pace of activity over the second half of the year. This summer, the Seventh Annual Prudential Ride London will be whizzing through our streets. Dozens of projects in Surrey will have benefited from grants totaling nearly £4 million since it began, and whilst riders themselves have raised a staggering £66 million for charity. As many of you are aware, I will be taking part in this year's ride in aid of Shooting Star Children's Hospice, Princess Alice Hospice and the Brain Chima Charity, all fantastic causes. I will be doing all I can to raise the profile of the amazing work that they do. We will continue the work to identify a new civic heart for the county council that will mean that we are closer to our residents. The creation of local partnership boards will gather pace, which I hope will be a key forum for engagement with communities around local issues, and I look forward to boards being piloted by Rygate and Banstead and Runnymede Borough Councils. Equally, we take our responsibilities in safeguarding our communities from the impacts of flooding very seriously, and I will be looking to make real progress in closing the funding gap on the Surrey Flood Alleviation Scheme. Finally, Mr Chairman, I will also be announcing in the autumn a series of pledges which will be our promises to the residents of Surrey over the coming months and years and will support our commitment to be a leading county authority. Can I wish all members a peaceful summer break and suggest you use the opportunity to recharge your batteries in readiness for a very busy September? Thank you.
I call Mr Darby.
Hello. Yes, thank you, Leader. Praise where it's due. For children's services, we have a really welcome improvement, a great performance by all involved at all levels. Long may that continue. My only word of warning is that there is a very long way to go. We have completed the first mile of a marathon. Adult services, I welcome the recent invitation to the cabinet member for adult care to the first meeting of the new parliamentary group. I hope that that may bear much fruit in time to come. I do have concerns about assessing people when they are at their best. This may well produce £20 million or £30 million of savings, but are we seriously suggesting the problems are solved? You only need to have watched the recent harrowing panorama programmes on adult care to understand the reality. Youth centres, they seem to have been effectively abandoned by Surrey. We'll hear more on that later. We do, I think, run the risk of giving the impression to central government that funding is fine, that all is well. What we're actually doing is managing a continuing crisis. It's all very well to manage to balance the books, but we need to do better to achieve the Surrey vision. We cannot do so with the current funding arrangements. The recent Highways All-Party Parliamentary Group report is therefore welcome. It remains to be seen whether central government will act on it. Local roads and footways remain poor, a danger to all users, including pedestrians and of course cyclists. We certainly need to make journeys safer. We've had two reports recently on local authority funding, the first suggesting a £60 billion deficit by 2024/25, the second that local authority funding is broken. The usual central government response, not answering the question and quoting meaningless figures, with the suggestion that each local authority was responsible for managing its own resources. Not exactly helpful. We head towards death by a thousand cuts. The Green Paper on Adult Care remains missing in action, or is it in inaction? Funding overall is the big issue. I look forward to having a wider debate on that. The answer is not tax cuts. Surrey's current favourite expression is doing things at pace. I only wish we could get government to buy into that. I fear the time has come to join together to cry from the rooftops. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Mr Botton.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to endorse what the leader has said about the progress we've made in children's services as attested to by Ofsted. I think it's an outstanding example of programme management, and the grip and speed with which this programme has been addressed is a credit to the council. I also welcome the progress on local partnership boards, but for me, there is an overriding obligation that we need to grasp. The council must sustain its objective of being a system leader. This is not just about symbolism or status, it's about leading the drive on issues which are difficult, challenging and complicated, and at the moment, I don't think we do. We should be better system leaders on school place planning, which feels to residents as if we're behind the curve. I know that 250 properties slated for my district ward alone have no school expansion plans attached to them, and the children will have to travel out of town. We should be ahead of this. We're not now. I welcome the progress on the transport vision which the leader has addressed, and I look forward to that development in terms of our commissioning sustainable public transport. My view is that we should be in the lead and saying no to Heathrow Expansion. We're not now. We must grow to be system leaders. We must grow to be system leaders in ensuring that we have the infrastructure funding for our communities. We cannot allow the SIL and Sector 106 processes to roll through planning authorities with no senior oversight and no strategic vision. I hugely welcome the work that Colin Kent is doing in this in respect of the HIF bid in Tandridge, and I believe that's an example of how we should be providing forceful and strategic leadership, which I'm not sure we're doing now. We must show leadership in ensuring that on planning matters, our highways team meet our residents' expectations and are clear and transparent and always provide a detailed response on complex or controversial planning applications. We don't now. As the flood authority, we must ensure that the Environment Agency and the water companies provide adequate sewage and drainage for our properties as they are built. We don't now. If we don't do that, our residents will pick up the tragic consequences of the consequential flood. We know that in many parts of Surrey, there is a crisis in primary care. We entertain the hope of system leadership in health and social care, and I hugely welcome the health and wellbeing strategy, but for our residents, that means nothing if they can't get a doctor's appointment. The long-acknowledged democratic deficit in health needs to be filled by us as system leaders. Who will advocate for our residents if we as the senior council don't? I do not wish to add to the leader's burden, but all this comes from my inbox. All this is the expectation of our citizens. All this is their anxieties, their insecurities, their fears for the future. I hope that we can seriously advocate to solve these problems, because I'm not sure that we do now. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr Essex.
Thank you, and apologies, Leader, because this question doesn't just draw on your speech, but it draws on a discussion I had with the cabinet member for the environment on a cycle path to deep cuts, which is just finishing construction funded by Surrey County Council. I was really interested in your talk about the Rethinking Transport Initiative and plans to encourage sustainable and active modes of transport, which I'm sure you know is a win-win, because cycling and walking is not only good because it makes us healthier, but it also reduces air pollution, which now has causal links to dementia, lung and heart disease. In light of this, please, can you confirm that the council will invest, not just encourage, in sustainable public and active transport, and therefore our spending on buses will increase? At least our number of buses and use of buses will increase as a result of this strategy? And secondly, might, as part of your health and wellbeing strategy, perhaps we could draw something which I'm not sure other people are doing quite yet? Maybe we could have long-term public health investment bonds to shift our new investment to that which helps us live longer and better in older age?
Thank you. Mrs Newell.
I was very pleased to hear the leader's comments about the environment and also helping people to fulfil their potential. Does the leader agree with me that we should congratulate Surrey Choices for their award-winning garden at the Hampton Court Palace Garden Festival? This was the brainchild of Wendy Baldwin of Surrey County Council's Surrey Choices. All the work was done by their customers who have learning difficulties, and all the items were recycled and upcycled in activities performed within the Fernleigh Day Centre. This is an absolute example of enabling the people who had learning difficulties and foreseeing what you can do by spending no money but by recycling all these items and growing everything from seed and cuttings. To add to your comments about enabling people to fulfil their potential, I was really delighted to attend Surrey County Council's Employability Making a Difference Awards. This scheme identifies employers and assists their customers, who all have learning difficulties, to find suitable opportunities of employment. The winning customers at this event all had gone on to get full-time employment at the employers that they had been identified with. The employers themselves have got awards. Some of these employers have gone that extra mile to actually go and get training so that they could employ more people from Surrey Choices. I would hope that everybody in this room and that the leader would agree with me that in our own divisions, that we can speak to employers, explain to them and show them the videos from this event to show them what can be done. Everyone can benefit. The individuals can play an important part in the environment and be valued. Their families benefit, but above all, the employers made it clear at this event that they too benefited. Their customers, their own customers, love the learning difficulties people that came to them. In fact, in some sense, they miss them on their days off. So I hope that everyone will go from here and find these employers, show them what can be done, and let's expand the efforts of employability so that everyone can fulfil their potential.
Thank you. And finally, Mrs Lewis.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you to the leader of the council and the leaders of the residents in Independence Group and of the Libdams for putting children's issues at the beginning of their speeches, which is exactly where they should be. They are of primary importance to this council amidst a very busy agenda. I'm reflecting on the final sentence of the report by the children's commissioner, which was published at the end of last month, and his final sentence was, "I am able to commend the progress that has been made whilst continuing to emphasise the magnitude of the task." I think that puts the situation into a really good balance. First of all, thinking about the progress that has been made, that progress has included a restructure of 2,700 posts. That affects 2,700 employees of this council and their families, 2,700 people who've been through a time of uncertainty whilst trying to improve services at the same time. What's been really impressive is how they have risen to this challenge and embraced change, and I think that was indicated by the letter of congratulations sent on behalf of Unison by their children's convener congratulating our DCS and his director's team on what they had achieved so far. In that letter, he said, "To be honest, I do not even remember when was the last time we had such a positive Ofsted inspection report, so we certainly need to recognise and celebrate the success." And I think it's fantastic that our staff are taking that approach to it, when you think of the trauma of going through that huge restructure. The second part, the balancing part of the commissioner's statement is the magnitude of the task, and I would describe this experience of children's services improvement as the first year being characterised by a long slog to get to the foothills, and in front of us, we still have a mountain. So I'd just like in my last few seconds to thank all the members in the chamber who have offered to support the ascent of that mountain. The officers are working hard, but they can't do it without us continuing to support and putting it at the top of our priorities. There are people on the Select Committee, the Corporate Parenting Board, visiting residential homes and secure accommodation, and making recommendation 41 visits with me to Front Iron South, so I'd like to thank all members for the part that they're going to play in the ascent of that mountain. Thank you.
Thank you. Leader, would you like to respond to those comments, please?
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, members, for your comments and questions. I think in relation to Nick Darby's first point around children's services, I think Mary Lewis has given a very full and comprehensive answer to that. In no sense whatsoever is this council or any of the officers here complacent. We have had a little bit of success, we have made a little bit of progress, we are absolutely aware of the enormity of the task, and we will continue to drive that forward as hard and as quickly as we can to get us to the point where we will be, which is an outstanding authority. In relation to funding from central government, you may have noticed that there's a little bit of debate at the moment in terms of who might be our next Prime Minister, and I'm sure we'll all enjoy seeing that again this evening on BBC. Philip Hammond, the Member of Parliament for Runnymede and Weybridge in my own division, tells me, and he has said publicly, that he is sitting on £26 billion of cash and rising. There is a debate, as you'll have seen amongst the Conservative Party, how that money is spent and indeed whether the outgoing Prime Minister spends it before the incoming Prime Minister. This morning's announcement, I gather, was that £5 billion of that will be set aside for education, for schools. We know that there is a funding issue, whether it's around special education needs and disability of the high needs block, around general education, around funding for sixth form colleges. We need more money undoubtedly in that area, but we also need it in many other areas, including adult social care. This council and the state of the council's finances broadly reflect most other authorities around the country, so I don't think we're an outlier, I don't think we're unique. I have listened to both of the candidates at the local government conference last week, both of whom have promised to support local governments more actively and more visibly than perhaps has happened in the past. I don't care how active and how visible they are, as long as they give us some more money. So we will continue to fight for that, not perhaps as publicly as we may have done in the past, but I can assure you absolutely that there are many private conversations with the current cabinet at least. In terms of Chris Bolton, again, thank you for your comments. I completely agree that as the upper-tier authority, as it's known, this council should be a system leader. I think we have to recognise that we need to get our own house in order first. There are many things that we are doing and need to do, but the challenge for us is to not only do what we can do, but also to deliver that in partnership with others. That is why the local partnership board and those sorts of forums and structures are hugely important. You talk about school planning places, you know, we have the odd situation where we are not the local planning authority. We do not know until they publish their plans under Regulation 18 for approval what local authorities intend to do in terms of expanding their housing requirements. So it's very difficult for us as an educational authority, school place planning necessarily, to anticipate that as much as we would like to do. Equally, in terms of highways planning, I'm, like every other member in this authority, have experiences of frustration where perhaps the view is that the planning team in highways have not taken as robust a view on certain planning applications and the impact that may have on safety. You know, we do need to do that, but we are constrained by statutes. There are only limits to what we can actually do, but to the extent that we can do something more, then we will. And then in terms of wider cooperation, I mean, we've got the Environment Agency, we've got the local enterprise partnerships, we've got the district and boroughs, and we have Surrey Heartlands. Just in terms of health, I now chair the Integrated Care System Board that sits on the top of delivery of NHS services, and we are working very hard, along with the chief executive, to integrate wherever we can the health system with this authority. And I do believe that health and wellbeing runs absolutely through the centre of everything that we do and the services that we provide. So I completely agree with you that we should be the system leader, we should be leading from the front. We are starting to... We are starting to do that visibly in some areas, there is much more work to do, but it has to be done in partnership, in collaboration and in cooperation and not simply this authority imposing its will on other organisations. To Jonathan Essex, I have got LEP funding in my own division for over 2 million pounds to put a cycle path from Brooklands industrial estate to Weybridge Station and into Weybridge Town and it will be a shared cycle path and walkway and we will have bicycles for rent by the station. So you know, a very positive and practical step in terms of creating shared space and you know, alternative sustainable transport means. That's what we need to be looking at, you know. For me, I think actually the challenge is, unlike the post office where it's the, you know, the last mile, it's the first mile. It's how do you get people from their front door to some form of communication hub? So you know, how do you get them to a train station or a bus terminal, whatever it is? I agree with you that, you know, and that the whole piece of work that we're doing around rethinking transport is exactly focused on that, you know. We need to have, we need to provide a transport system that enables people to get out of their single vehicles, use whether it's buses or shared transport, pool cars, whatever it is, but we have to find a way or walking or cycling. Yeah, we've got to do that and that is exactly what that piece of work is focused on and I hope, very much hope and believe that it will come forward with some really positive proposals. To Burnley, absolutely, completely support all of the work that is being done, not only by Surrey Choices but by this authority in terms of support to those with learning disabilities. I wasn't aware of that they had won an award, I'm afraid, at Hampton Court and I shall have a little look at that. Later in this agenda, we talk about, under the shareholder report, we talk about Surrey Choices, we have extended their contract now for some years. We will work with them to transform the way in which they're delivering services, to help them do that, to extend the way in which they're delivering those services, you know, and we're hugely supportive of that and the work that they do and I'm sure we would all want to recognise that. I think, Mr Chairman, that probably picks up hopefully most of the points.
Thank you Leader. Item six then, Members' Question Time included in the supplementary agenda with you. I've had notice of seven questions, five minutes per question for supplementary questions. These must be framed as questions please and be relevant to the original question. Question time will be limited to 45 minutes, at which point I will finish the question we are on and close the item. Any questions not covered for 45 minutes, a written answer has been tabled and of course members can follow up with the relevant Cabinet member outside the meeting. And you'll also see there is a previously circulated Cabinet member briefing and there will be an additional 15 minutes if any members wish to ask questions at that time. These will be taken on a first come, first served basis and there'll be no supplementaries. So first question, Mr Forster.
Thank you Chairman. Please, will the Lead for the Council agree to write to the new Prime Minister and the new Secretary for Education when they're in place, pushing them on funding for schools and asking them that the new reshuffled government agree to properly fund all schools and send in Surrey?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'm very happy indeed to do that.
Thank you. Question two, Mr Button.
Thank you Chairman, I thank the Leader for the counsel, his reply. And would he note that where it's possible, the success of having senior Cabinet members involved in the delivery of infrastructure plans has been notably successful and I made reference in my speech earlier. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you. Any others? Leader.
I think I was asked to note it and indeed I will.
Thank you. Question three, Mrs Watson.
I'd like to thank the Cabinet member for his response and I'd like to ask for a copy of the new Strategy and Action Plan and also I'd like to know in six months' time what progress has been made. Thank you.
Thank you Chairman. Yes, thank you. I will furnish all members with a new copy. It's a very good suggestion and in six months I'll make sure I include it in my report back to council. Thank you.
Thank you. Question four, Mr Evans.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank the Leader for his honest reply. Does he have any special, further to what he said earlier on in his speech, does he have any special measures in mind to ensure that Surrey is not one of the councils that fears it will run out of money to meet its legal obligations in the next three years? And has he made any specific plans to go to Number 10 Downing Street in the near future to talk to the new Prime Minister to push Surrey's case to some of the funds that he referred to earlier on?
Thank you. Any others? Leader.
I'm sure I'll be one of the first people to be invited to Number 10. It's Jeremy Hunt perhaps, but. I mean, I think the answer to your question is that it's about good financial planning. I mean, this council, as you know, has spent the last year or more than that looking closely at all aspects of its costs and how it delivers those services and we have for the first year in many balanced the books in the last financial year. We have a massive challenge again this year to do that, but you know, I'm confident that we will. So I think, you know, when you look at other authorities and the financial position they're in, that's, there are individual variables. Northampton, there were particular issues around that. We are very conscious of that. We've had SIFRA in here, you know, we've looked, we've stress tested every single aspect of our transformation plans and our budget process. So there is no magic wand other than having a laser light look and focus on how we manage our finances and that is what we are doing. The, you know, as I said earlier, in terms of, we recognise that, as the most sensible people recognise that, there is a severe underfunding for local government in a number of areas. You know, we will, I don't know whether, you know, whether we will have any Members of Parliament for Surrey that are in the Cabinet or not, I don't know whether that actually helps us or not in truth. But what you can, what you can be assured of is that as a Conservative group in this council, we will do all that we can to persuade the Conservative government whilst it's in government to provide proper funding.
Thank you Leader. Question five, Mr Mallett.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Thank you for the reply, but I find the terminology slightly unclear and the last question has not been answered. So does the no rule, or no role, sorry, does the no role for open access mean that the youth centres will close? And with regard to my last question on the paper, so will the opening, will the premises and the present and the equipment in those premises, will those be open to the voluntary providers? And finally, has any work been done to evaluate the levels or possible levels of crime and vandalism which may happen as a result of withdrawal of the general youth services? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mallett. Mr Essex.
Thank you. Up until about three years ago, our local committee in Righate and Banstead had an annual report detailing our level of youth provision, including the number of hours provided in youth centres and outside. In light of this question and response, would it be possible to give local committees an update of where we are now and how it's changed the last three years?
Thank you, Mr Harrison.
Thank you Chairman. A critical issue as to whether voluntary groups are going to come forward is are they going to be charged rent for the use of these premises? And a recent response that I received was that that was not yet decided from an officer and I would like to know, there's mention of the Edge Centre and the Hawley Centre, are these organisations being charged rent? Because that would seem to me to be some sort of precedent as to how we're going to manage these things going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs Mason.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I noticed from the questions that councillor Mallett put forward, the first three have not been answered. As you all know, I'm deeply involved with the Edge and I have to say in the report it states that the universal youth work provision has remained unchanged during the restructure. Well rubbish. In the case of the Edge, this is simply not the case. There is currently no provision and has been very little at all in two and a half years in the area of high deprivation and high density. Do you accept that this view widely held in Epsom and Yule that you've abandoned young people with the greatest need without having anything to put in its place?
Thank you. And finally, Mr Townsend.
Just a very quick question because it is a serious concern. There are rumours around that there's going to be a consultation on youth and youth centres. If there is, can we actually have an idea when that might happen? Hopefully not during school holidays so that people can actually respond and give their views. It is absolutely vital that local youth centres that are currently being used, including mine in Ashford, continue the good work that they're doing. If there is going to be a consultation, when is that going to be?
Thank you. Mrs Lewis.
Well, thank you for all that interest in youth. That is fantastic. First of all, to answer Mrs Mason's point about the questions not being answered, is it what is the present position on council youth service provision? And it makes it clear in the answer that the offer is unchanged what it was at the beginning of the restructure. In your case, Mrs Mason, you might not have been happy with how it was at the beginning of the restructure, but it has been unchanged. In fact, I think in the case of the Edge, there has been some small work taking place in the last two and a half years, which was a group with young women. We talked about that at the last council meeting and there was a low level of take up. But I agree that at the moment, this is very much a work in progress and it's been made clear in the answer that while the work in place progress takes place, that none of the youth centres will be closed. But we've talked already at this meeting about how the improvement of children's services is a mountain to climb. There has been a change in the structure of those services. We're going to have two completely different services from those we had before. At the far right hand end of that windscreen of services that we've talked about, at the statutory end, we're going to have an adolescent safeguarding service with a really clear aim of keeping those most troubled youngsters out of care by supporting them in their families and that is, you know, at the far end. In between, we'll be having our targeted youth support service where when problems begin to emerge, there'll be specific commissioned work to be done on specific issues that have come up for those young people to prevent them moving to the crisis end of the service. What you're talking about here is mostly the universal open access part of our youth work and as I've said to you very clearly in previous meetings as well as this one, this is a work in progress. Decisions haven't been made yet. All of this involves a lot of work with the community, with voluntary community sector, with districts and boroughs. That work is in progress and local members will be consulted about the work as it moves forward. I'm afraid I can't be any more specific about that at the moment because this is all a work in progress, but everybody will hear about it and your interest in work for young people is noted. Thank you.
Thank you. Question six, Mr Essex. Thank you. Any others? Leader.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I think, as Jonathan knows, I mean, there is some commercial sensitivity around these sites as they go through the process of decision around what they will be used for. So as the answer says, a briefing under Part Two is more than, we are more than welcome to give that to you to set out those in detail. A number of properties have gone into the joint venture, are being considered, but what we don't want to do is by making these public before we've made a decision is somehow distort the market. So there is, and I hope you would respect that, there is some commercial sensitivity about it, but that information you've asked for is available under Part Two.
Thank you. Question seven, Mr Evans.
Thank you very much. Mr Few, you will be aware, I'm sure, that I've asked a number of questions on the fire service at recent meetings with, I have to say, very few satisfactory answers. Do you feel this is yet another case of the figures not being made available to this council? And if I, and as I assume is correct, Surrey County Council has already budgeted for this project, why will you not disclose the cost of this project so that members of this council can know exactly what's been involved? Is there something you've got to hide or is it too secretive or too embarrassing to tell us?
Thank you. Mrs Turner Stewart.
Thank you Chairman. Would the Cabinet member agree that once operational, this station will have an impressive range of capabilities with a dedicated high-rise training tower, line and rope rescue with all new inter-service transpheries and recruits to be trained to this standard, specialised working at height facility, which is the only capability in Surrey to do this, internal evacuation and ventilation training, which again is moving with the post-grenade expectations of the inspectors, with stairwell clearing fans and state-of-the-art facilities that haven't been seen before in Surrey. It's future-proofed with water rescue drying facilities and there is ongoing discussions with CCAM and Surrey Police, so this could be a true multi-agency facility. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr Few.
Thank you Chairman. Yes, I do agree. With regards to your question, with your question, I thought my response was pretty clear in detail. Once the facility is completed and we have the final invoices in, there's no reason why you will not be told on what the total cost is. There's a budget, you can have a budget, the question is, it's academic compared to the actual costs. Once the costs are in, we can compare A and B and you can then mull over the difference.
Thank you, Mr Few. Are there any questions on the previously circulated Cabinet member briefings? Mr Townsend.
Thank you Chairman. It's on the highways portfolio for Mr Furness. I'm very happy to see that surface dressing has been done in my particular division on a couple of roads that is to do with anti-skid. In fact, one part of it where they do turn right and they would potentially skid, that part of the road actually wasn't done. Would you agree with me though, that the money that we've spent on that, and I didn't ask for that to be done, I might add, on those roads, that was somebody, presumably Mr Furness made that decision or his officers, but would you agree with me that money might well be better spent on a severe flooding issue on the A24 that he knows very well about, he has written to me about, they have done an investigation, but he said it's no short-term solution. I'd like him to actually say whether the money might well have been better spent than surfacing the road for non-skid rather than put it for the flooding issue that is a major issue.
Mr Furness.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Mr Townsend, yes, I don't think that the resurfacing budget would have actually covered your major flooding issue, particularly as well you know, it is all around major gas network, so we have a big issue there. We do, we have done the investigation, they are working on costs for what to do. If you would like a walkabout, I've done it with a number of members, we can do this, we can look at that particular element of your division, but the resurfacing with anti-skid would have been done on safety grounds. If you would like to discuss another one, maybe put forward through the local committee, happy to do so, but I leave the invitation there to you to invite me to your area.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr Forster.
Thank you Chairman. Two questions if I may. Firstly, to Colin Kemp about the A320. Many of my residents will be pleased to talk about the infrastructure bid probably being delivered by March 2023, but have we had the details from the government of how we spend the money? It's very difficult for us to be confident in saying we're going to do this in a few years' time without being told the details. And secondly, to Mike Goodman about Heathrow, which in his briefing outlines that we're working on a consultation response. Shouldn't a statutory consultation response go to full council, Cabinet and/or the Select Committee rather than just one Cabinet member and officers in private? Shouldn't it be done in open and public and everyone's use taken into account?
Thank you, Mr Kemp. And then Mr Goodman in response.
I was made aware yesterday that it has arrived the terms and conditions, quite a lengthy document which the officers are going for at the moment to understand the contents both for Surrey and Woking. So once we've got a feel for what that is, actually, we're happy to come and have that conversation locally.
And Mr Goodman.
Thank you, Will, for that question. It is practice when consultations come out, particularly something like Heathrow, the Cabinet member in consultation... the Cabinet member in consultation with officers produce a reply. However, what I would say is with Heathrow, we've held, I think, five Members' reference groups or meetings with Heathrow. There's another one planned mid-July where members can come in and make their views known to Heathrow. We capture all that, and that also forms part of our response. But it is normal practice that the Cabinet member signs his off.
Thank you. Mr Harrison.
Thank you, Chairman. It's a question for Mr Kemp on the LEPs. To many of us, the workings of the LEPs are no more clear than the workings of North Korean politics. I really would like to understand a little more about how they operate, what their objectives are. We've had lots of Member briefings cancelled. Perhaps we can take up the opportunity to have a dialogue on, perhaps separate ones on the East and the West. I think that would be a very valuable spending of time. Thank you.
Mr Kemp.
Thank you, Mr Harrison. Yeah, I mean, and both LEPs are, all the LEPs have a base idea of what they should deliver. Each LEPS interprets that in their own way, and their delivery methods are different. So we have two LEPs, as you quite rightly said, we have the four boroughs in the East and then the seven in the West, and they have two different LEPs, EM3 and Coastal Capital. Happy to do some briefing with both the LEPs. We have done them in the past, but happy to come and do some more of those. And I know Jonathan from Coastal Capital and Cathy from EM3 will be happy to come and talk through their plans. And it's probably a good idea to do it at the moment because they're both developing their local industrial strategies, which will form their workloads going forward.
Thank you. Mr Hall.
Thank you, Chairman. A question to the deputy Cabinet member for property. Very pleased to see the property project delivery. As she knows, there has been a certain degree of concern in Mul Valley about a site. Could I ask, is it likely that that site is going to be on the floor approved for development?
Mrs Brummel.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Mr Hall, for your question. I'm really pleased to announce that the particular property you refer to in Mul Valley is in the first tranche of properties in the joint venture, and we expect that to be coming forward before the end of this year.
Thank you. Mr Kingston.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I'm referring a question to the portfolio holder for Highways, and it references the second section, Town Centre Agreements, and the second bullet point. This will enable important highway maintenance works to be undertaken by those best placed to do so. I know my residents may well have a view on this, but can you tell me in what circumstance is Surrey County Council as the Highway Authority not best placed to undertake important highway maintenance work? And will the handing over of the important work also involve handing over sufficient funds to complete them?
Thank you, Mr Furness.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Thank you, Count Kingston. As you well know, it is down to the district and boroughs what they would like to take on out of a nice menu that has been produced. Surrey Highway will continue to meet the commitments of the Highway Authority and what is required of us for those districts and boroughs, such as Woking, which have taken on higher-quality pedestrianised areas. It is down to the district and borough to take on those maintenance costs. The county council will keep them to standard. Any income that is derived from licensing in those areas can be kept by the district and borough, overseen by the local committee, in order to facilitate that maintenance. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Dr Povey.
Thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to ask the deputy leader about LEPs. When they were set up, there were two that covered part of Surrey, but part of Surrey was not in either. Now, I think in your answer to Mr Harrison, you actually said that now they do cover the whole of Surrey. Would you confirm that between them, they cover the whole of Surrey? Or if not, is the funding from the LEPs only available to those parts of Surrey that are covered by the LEPS and therefore not available to those parts that are not within one or other of the LEPs?
Thank you, Mr Kemp.
There we go on North Korean politics again, by the way. Yes, so the whole of Surrey is covered by LEPs. The seven boroughs and districts in the West are by EM3, Enterprise M3, and the four in the East are covered by Coastal Capital.
Thank you. And finally, Mr Hussain.
Thank you, Chairman. My question is to councillor Kemp as well, to do with the LEPs over the weekend. First of all, can I make a comment? Congratulations on Woking. Thank you. It's going to transform Woking access into the centre. The LEPs, I read somewhere that the government's actually asking us to limping one LEPS per county, and as we are served by two counties, is that going to have any effect on us, or are you able to comment on how we can mitigate that?
Thank you. Final response, please, Mr Kemp.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. The LEPs have just done a boundary review, so I don't think we're going to get one LEPS per county. They've just done a boundary review where they've done some tweaking of the boundaries they cover, and there's been some changes in the Enterprise M3 and some changes in Coastal Capital, as in Coastal Capital, Croydon coming out and some bits in the south going in. Funny enough, at the recent LGA conference, the minister said that they may relook at it again, because actually, from our point of view, even if we're lined up with Hampshire or Sussex, it would be quite good to have one LEPS. But at the moment, we are where we are, and that's what we've got to deal with. But we responded to the consultation on the recent boundary review, and we'll respond again if it comes forward again.
Thank you. That's the end of item six. Moving to item seven, statements by members on local issues only. I received a notice of a statement from one member, so I call Nick Darby to make a statement of two minutes maximum without further discussion or right of reply. Mr Darby.
Thank you, Chairman. Secondary school admissions in the Dittens. Hinchley Wood is our local secondary school, Ofsted outstanding and extremely popular. It has 220 places in each year. The four feeder schools have a total of 10 classes for entry each year, 300 children. For a number of years, the total first-choice applications to Hinchley Wood have been more than 350. Clearly, there is a problem. This year, Hinchley Wood offered a bulge class. Surrey said no, simply saying there were enough places in Elmbridge. Local primaries are not feeders for anywhere else, so children don't get allocated to any other choices, let alone close by. Parents feel quite understandably they are bottom of the list, ignored and disenfranchised. Allocated elsewhere, for instance, instead of a maximum 15-minute walk to Hinchley Wood, there's a 20- to 25-minute walk to a bus stop, then 35 minutes on the bus, a further walk, which is hardly sustainable. The answers are straightforward. Firstly, change the bus start to Thames Ditten rather than Hampson Court. I believe there may be progress in this already, for which I'm extremely grateful. Secondly, discuss and confirm a bulge class at Hinchley Wood for 2020/21 year, acknowledging that an extra 30 will still not soak up demand. And thirdly, Surrey should take the lead and offer immediate encouragement to all Elmbridge schools, which are all academies, to review admission criteria Elmbridge-wide. I detect genuine willingness of the schools to do that. I know those involved at Surrey understand all of this. I have met many times with prospective parents, heads and governors, Surrey officers and members, including Julie Isles, Tim Oliver, and others. I and the parents look forward to hearing further news of progress, and at the very least, that their pleas are heard and being dealt with at pace. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Darby. Item eight, original motions. We've got 90 minutes for deliberation in total. I've received notice of three original motions, and we're going to take them in the order of Mr Goodman, Mr Kingston, and Mr Essex. So understanding Order 1123, the council has to decide if it wishes to debate the motion standing in the name of Mr Mike Goodman. Thank you. Don't hear any contrary. Mr Goodman, I understand that you wish to table an amendment to your original motion, which has been circulated. Does everyone have the amendment, Will?
Thank you.
So, on the basis that debate the motion now, Mr Goodman, do you have a second? Oh, Mr Kingston.
Do you want to sound pushy here? But I've got original motions, and my one is first.
We're going to take Mr Goodman's first, Mr Kingston.
Oh, you've made that decision?
I have.
Oh, thank you. It wasn't communicated to me.
Oh, my apologies. Mr Good, Mr Goodman, who is your second? Mr Forster. Right. Mr Goodman, will you move your motion?
Thank you, Chairman. I would like to first of all thank Will Forster for seconding this motion. This is an important motion because this will affect our planet and our lives of all of us, and we now have the opportunity to make a difference. We cannot wait any longer. We all need to act now. I fully support the county council announcing a climate emergency and look forward to working closely with government, district and boroughs, businesses, partners, and residents in tackling climate change. I want to develop and deliver an action-targeted climate change strategy for Surrey by next spring. I will be asking the Environment Commission and the newly-formed Select Committee Task Group, together with the service partners and districts and boroughs, to deliver this. They will ensure this is a comprehensive strategy that delivers action and real change. As Al Gore said, although the magnitude of climate change may make individuals feel helpless, individual action is critical for meaningful change. He went on to say, this is not just about the environment, it's about the community, it's about jobs, it's about justice. Our residents told us this when we consulted them last year, and the county council's 2030 vision was the protection of our environment as at its core, with the ambition that residents will live in clean, safe, and green environment. And if anyone really believes that her environment is less important than the economy of the UK, then trust, try holding your breath while you can't your money. In 205, let me give credit to Tony Blair. When he said global warming is too serious for the world any longer to ignore, it's danger of split into opposing fractions on it. Unfortunately, in reality, not a lot happened until the UK Climate Change Act in 2008, which has been a model of climate change legislation, which many other countries have followed. There have been improvements over the last 10 years, but it wasn't until David Attenborough's brilliant Blue Planet series. And although I did not support the tactics of the Extinction Rebellion, I did support many of their important messages they were making. And let's not forget the voice of Greta Thunberg, who was inspirational to us all. In May, the Climate Committee, made up of eminent professors, academics, business leaders, and advisory groups, published the important Net Zero, the UK's contribution to stopping global warming. The report recommended the government set a net zero emission by 2050, and this has now become UK law. It is the most important environmental legislation in a lifetime. Technology is recognised as having an essential role in innovation, in achieving mitigation and adoption of goals. It is important to share and work together across sectors. Delivering Net Zero by 2050 is technically feasible but challenging for us all. And the priority for the UK government should be the delivery of what will have the largest impacts and provide action plans and consultations with councils to deliver. Aviation contributes to both CO2 and non-CO2 warming effects. The UN's International Civic Aviation Organisation is in charge of developing an approach to mitigate emissions. The Committee on Climate Change will be publishing later this year a report on what the aviation sector must do and act now, and I would suggest that the UK government consider this and put this into practice. It is also essential that all the environmental issues on any Heathrow expansion are included in the master plan, particularly rail and public transport. Surrey County Council must do more on renewable energy. Our percentage is low, and we need with new contracts to set targets at a much higher level. And I hope in the Environment Charter will set a target that reflects significant improvement. Surrey's view of transport in Surrey is an important step forward in shaping transport for the future, and I'm working at having buses in Surrey that are zero-emission vehicles powered by either electricity, gas, or hydrogen. Now, I've been in discussion with our main suppliers over the last couple of weeks, and I hope to make an announcement later this week. Transport continues to generate the highest level of NO2s and CO2s in Surrey. And whilst over time this will decrease the significant lower ownership of diesel and petrol cars, we must improve our EV strategy. We have just over 311 public charging points at 95 locations in Surrey, and many of these points are not the fast-charging units. We must work with our district and borough colleagues and government in developing and delivering a robust strategy. I want us to lead on tougher energy standards into our buildings in the county. Currently, only seven of our Leidenborough districts have standard specification of Bremen very good for new buildings. I would like us to work together to have all councils operating in Bremen standard of excellent at agreeable date. Surrey recycling rates are among the highest in the UK. However, based on 2016 data, if all our dry recycling stuff that found itself into residue waste had gone into recycling, we'd have saved a staggering 121,000 tonnes of CO2. And I've now asked the service to report this on a yearly basis. Protecting our environment shouldn't be about politics. It should be about responsibility and sustainability. Every business, every community organisation, every public sector body, and every family doing what they can to support a sustainable world. And I hope you all support this motion. Thank you.
Mr Forster, do you wish to speak now or reserve your position?
I would like to speak now, Chairman, if I may. Mr Chairman, although I was not down to second this original motion, I'm happy to second this amended, strengthened, and enhanced motion to declare a climate emergency in Surrey. Climate change is unquestionably one of the biggest issues of our time. We as individuals, as a council, as a country, and as a planet, must take action now. By us declaring a climate emergency and importantly setting out a process to meet this challenge, we take a vital step forward in combating climate change. I would have liked us to take this step sooner, particularly earlier this year when colleagues and I on these benches proposed a similar motion, but Conservative members were not on board then, but you are on board now, and I'm pleased you are. Whereas the government's commitment to the 2050 target last month is really welcome, I do fear that the next Prime Minister is likely to row back on that commitment. So although I often disagree with councillor Goodman and Surrey's Cabinet and administration, they are at least going in the right direction, rather than going backwards, which I fear the government is going, and I do thank you for that. Mr Chairman, members, let's declare a climate emergency now, get a plan for the climate crisis to make Surrey greener, fairer, and safer. Thank you.
Mr O'Reilly.
I thought Mr Essex was in front of me, so... But I would, yeah, not unusual to give way to a colleague. Chairman, if I may, I will support this motion very enthusiastically. But, or rather it should be and, the very fact, and I'm sure this motion will be carried and probably hopefully carried unanimously, that in and of itself raises expectations right across Surrey and maybe elsewhere. If we are going to declare, as we will be, a climate emergency, is it absolutely essential within the next 18, two years that substantive, concrete, deliverable, and measurable policies are the result of that? Because there is nothing worse, nothing more soul-destroying than using great rhetoric and then failure to deliver. And that is something... And I believe that when Mike Goodman and Tim Oliver, as leader and the Cabinet members, have expressed that tangible commitment, I believe that they will deliver. And Chairman, without necessarily putting the conclusions before the process has begun, I think the point raised by Jonathan Essex right at the beginning in his questions to Tim Oliver about the role of public transport is absolutely critical. The leader has said, and the Select Committee on last Monday, talked about rethinking transport. If at the end of this process, not only are our fleet of buses far more environmentally friendly, electric buses, but not running on fossil fuel, and also, it has to be said, if there are not an increase in public provision of local transport, then I find it inconceivable, very difficult to imagine how our policy, how our commitment will be turned into practice without that level of commitment. So as we go forward, expectation- So as we go forward, expectations have been raised. Our capacity to deliver what we can deliver in Surrey is going to be one of the foremost challenges, and when it comes down to it, colleagues, it will be a matter of policy prioritisation. If we focus on the environment in times of still economic distress, then it may be that others have to give. That is the crucial political decision. Does the environment, all that is associated with, is that going to be our priority as we move forward?
Thank you. I welcome this second amended motion as a chance to work together to make a plan for a zero carbon Surrey, albeit slightly later, I think it's about 20 years between us. A plan that transforms priorities in next year's budget based on a new officer team, which I hope is being recruited as we speak, and our plan making needs more buses, more cycle planners. As part of our plan to rethink transport, we need sustainability and renewable energy specialists, as we ensure not just our new county hall is the greenest ever, but we transform our whole county too. And that means we also need green investment specialists to make Surrey not just places for people today, but for future generations, with a billion plus plan for zero carbon investment. And that means we must show how our plan starts with strong actions now. More trees, yes, but did you know that our ways of living are responsible for over 40 times as much carbon emissions that our trees soak up in Surrey? And the worst offender, roads, flying, fudging it is no good. We must stop supporting expansion of Gatwick with real estate investment and stop standing on the sidelines while an extra runway at Heathrow dumps more car parks in Surrey, carbon in the sky and turns Spelthorn into a building site till, well, 2050. How about a new... And how about a new mineral strategy, a mineral strategy that signals an end to drilling for oil and gas in our countryside? We could do that and get our own house in order first. We could divest our pension fund from the £145 million in oil, gas and coal mining. That would be a good start. If we're going to take a lead, we need to start with what we have and ourselves, and we need a lead so others can follow. So when scientists said last year we must go zero carbon globally by 2040 to 2055, then industrial countries should forget what's behind us and strain towards this goal ahead. We must be advance of the target if we want others to be able to follow our leadership. That means us. Seventy-one councils have now committed to a 2030 plan of action. That means a 10-year plan of action, not a 30-year one, three times quicker. What is sufficient urgency? What is sufficient leadership? I look forward to us having the courage to write real ambition into the plans that we write in the next six months, especially setting out what we're going to do in the next five years and how we change what we're investing in and what we will invest in during that time by involving people across Surrey. And I think we just must do that in a way that leaves no one behind. I look forward to helping make it happen with sufficient extra money from the governments.
Thank you, Mr Townsend.
Thank you, Chairman. I won't be looking for applause, so you don't have to worry about that. I'm talking as a simple man in the street, and we're often asked what can we do individually to move this forward in a positive way? And I'm just going to put forward one comment that I see regularly in my division, and I'm sure you all see it. Parents, when they pick their children up from school, invariably primary school, leave their motors running. I rest my case.
Thank you, Dr Povey.
Thank you, Chairman. Obviously, I support this motion and very pleased to support it, but a little bit worried in terms of the debate so far, it's about what we can do and what councils can do, and really picking up, I think, Mr Townsend's point that he made, it's about what every person in Surrey can do. I mean, because we can do so much, but at the end of the day, it's up to us as leaders in our communities to convince other people to do what they can individually, and so for 1.5 million residents in Surrey to start doing things, that's going to be a very powerful... So for instance, we could all encourage people to decrease waste, and that will have other benefits, improve recycling, again, that would have other benefits. You can improve the energy efficiency of your home if you haven't done all the things that you can so far. And thirdly, of course, driving, make sure your tyres are inflated at the right pressure, otherwise you use more petrol and maybe just ease off the accelerator a little bit. There are all sorts of individual actions that everybody can do to help.
Thank you, Mr Hussain.
Thank you, Chairman. I wholeheartedly support this motion, but quite Dr Povey, I think there are things that we can do as well. Being a deputy mayor, I've attended a plastic free woking, and that's organised by a charity, and they're actually helping shoppers as they come out of supermarkets to sort out their shopping and see how much plastic can be eliminated, and that's a start. But I want to go a bit further than this. It says here, write to government. We have 11 Surrey MPs in high positions. We should lobby our MPs, we should demand action and full support, and we should pester government, not just write to them, but lobbying. The government can do loads of things. This is something, this is a legacy that we want to leave behind for generations to come. We can make Surrey safer, cleaner, greener, not just Surrey, but the whole UK. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Taylor.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I fully support everything that's being proposed here that we can do at the Surrey level, but I think it's also worth emphasising to members that there's a lot going on in parallel on the same theme at district and borough levels, and I can speak with some confidence. As chairman of the Guildford Joint Committee, we recently received a petition that was signed by some hundreds of local schoolchildren entirely on the issue of climate change, and they came along and spoke extremely well, and the whole sector was very constructive. A, I think they went away feeling they'd had a good hearing and that a lot of sympathetic comments, but it was a learning curve both ways around. It also happened by coincidence that the BBC only recently ran an article somewhat belatedly on the electric buses for the Guildford Park and Ride Service that somebody may have seen on television, so we had that running on screen for a little while as members of the public came in and so on, and I think it's fair to say that that was news to some of them, perhaps particularly to some of the young people who came along as an example of not only something we were hoping to do, but it was actually already happening and already achieving major benefits. But also fortuitously, perhaps, but I think it's fairly normal of our agendas in Guildford, there are a whole succession of items, virtually every one of which was involved in one way or another, delivering various aspects of climate improvement. We had air quality, we had sustainable transport initiatives, a number of them funded partly by the LEPs. We had programmes for, that Mr Townsend's referred to, to what practical things we could do outside particular schools. Item after item after item through that agenda was, and the youngsters who came along recognised that, was practical things that we were actually already getting on with. That's not to say we can't and shouldn't do more, but there is a hell of a lot already going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Bottom.
Thank you, Chairman. I find myself in the somewhat Alice in Wonderland situation of finding that Dr Povey has said much of what I wanted to say, for which I thank him. One of the things seriously which unites us, Chairman, apart from our commitment to this motion, is our passion for the protection and safety of our children. And one of the most significant evidential changes that is coming about is being the impact of atmospheric pollution on children's learning, children's behaviour and children's cognitive capacity. We have a number of schools that sit beside motorways and significantly busy A-roads. We need to address that. We need to address the use of vehicles outside primary schools. We need to bring the passion that we have for our children's safety to this very issue. And finally, it seems to me entirely clear that this motion is incompatible with any support for the expansion of Heathrow.
And finally, Mr Gallati.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I need to make it clear, I think, at the beginning that I'm not out of sympathy with this motion. It seems to me that you've only got to look around you and you can see that there is climate change taking place. I'm not personally completely convinced that the measures which are proposed, generally speaking, to resolve it are appropriate, but they certainly won't do any harm and I'm not opposed to them. The problem I have here is the paragraph four of the amended motion, because I remember less than a year ago that I, amongst a number of others, voted against Jonathan Essex's proposal for a declaration of a climate change emergency on the basis that we said that it wasn't within our competence. I have seen nothing in the last year which changes our standing orders or our terms of reference to make us competent, and I therefore cannot support this motion with that amendment in.
Thank you. Right, if that's the end of the debate, I'd like to call on Mr Goodman to reply. Thank you, and sum up.
Yes, well, let me try to cover a couple of the points, and I won't speak for long. The first point about the government rolling back with a new Prime Minister, that I do not believe will be the case because it's now in UK law, the first G7 country to do so. It is ambitious what we've set, but we can achieve it. I'm absolutely confident of that. But I looked to the Select Committee, the businesses and the government to help us, and somebody mentioned about writing to the government. Well, actually, I wrote to the government three times regarding after the last motion on climate change and low emissions, and I got a letter from the government on the Monday before they announced on the Tuesday that they were going to go for zero option by 2050. I agree with what's been said and several people about it isn't just about what we can do, it's about what we all must do. We all must do. Anti-idling, absolutely. I was at Buckland School two weeks ago, and there's going to be a DVD coming out shortly, where I was out with the children, talking to parents who were doing exactly what was said, leaving their car, and once you leave your car idling for more than 10 seconds, it creates NO2 level that is pollutant. So it's really good what we're doing, but we need to do more in our schools as well. Now, I know that there are many people, or some people here, that believe that we should make it 2030, but I have just come back on holiday, and I went to a beautiful city in Valencia, and I spent my time not reading a novel, but reading The Net Zero, the UK's contribution of stopping global warming. Now, I can tell you, if ever you want to read a document that clearly states what we must do and how we can do it, read this document. That is why I can absolutely support it now. I didn't understand quite as much as I did now when we first debated this, and I would have challenged any member to read this book. It's good reading, but read the executive summary first. Anyway, I... Kindle, you can get it on Kindle. It is a really good read. Seriously, I am absolutely delighted that across the board there is support here, and I take John O'Reilly's point about there's going to be a lot of pressure and other things, but I know Tim and myself, and I think the whole of the Cabinet, and I hope the whole of this chamber supports, we need to make this a priority because our residents want it, and we owe it for future generation to do it. And the last thing I would say, I'm sharing a stage with Michael Gove, where I'm going to be saying some of the things I've said today on Friday, and I'm looking for him, whether he may or may not do in the future, the government commitment, because we need the government commitment, both funding and direction of travel. We've not always had the direction of travel and strategy, but I hope today we can all agree this, because I think it's a really important motion for the future of our planet and our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, we will now put the vote to the motion. All those in favour would then raise their hands and press the yes button. And any extensions? Just the one. I declare that motion... Now I turn to the motion standing in the name of Mr Eberkington. Position was agreed with your leader yesterday at call over, Mr Kington. So understanding Order 12.3, council has to decide if it wishes to debate this motion today. Does council wish to debate the motion now? Thank you. Mr Kington, do you have a second?
Yes, I have a second, and councillor Mike Goodman.
Thank you. Excellent, and would you move your motion, please?
Mr Chairman, the climate has changed in more ways than one, not just the physical climate, which we hear so much about, but also the attitudinal climate. The number of people who understand the problems of and place higher priority on combating the effects of pollution, poor air quality is increasing, and in the case of trees, there is a growing demand for more planting across our rural and urban areas. In 2018, the government recognised this and appointed Sir William Worsley as the National Tree Champion, charged with overseeing the planting of 12 million new trees across the country, including 1 million in our towns. The problem is that whilst our residents, local environmental groups and the national government recognise the need for more trees, this council's current policy and Surrey Highways tasked with implementing it have not caught up with the new attitudinal change, which means that there is a real disconnect between the Surrey-wide desire for tree planting and what is happening on the ground, or should I say, not happening in the ground. The problem is typified by what is seen happening in Epsom Yule, where Surrey Highways have not planted a new tree since 2004. In 2017, after Surrey County Council took back the management of highway trees in Epsom Yule, the Borough Council agreed a scheme with Surrey Highways whereby residents can request the planting of an approved and appropriate tree in the verge for which they pay £250 to be planted by the Borough Council if the application is approved by Surrey County Council. However, since that new arrangement was introduced, virtually all requests for residents for tree planting on Surrey County Highway verges has been refused on the basis that it does not fit the criteria in the current policy. The policy requires a verge width of 1.1 metres, three foot six, when the standard width of grass verges in our extensive 1930s estates is just three feet. It also requires a pavement width of 1.6 metres from verge to the nearest boundary wall, and taken collectively, that means there needs to be a combined verge and pavement width of 2.7 metres, nearly nine feet, from curb to property boundary for a street tree planting proposal even to be considered. Mr Chairman, that's nonsense, that's unacceptable, and it has to change, particularly when it leads to 80-year-old Norma in Yule Court on her hands and knees with a measuring tape, trying to see if there's any way she can find the necessary pavement and verge measurements to allow for the replacement of two dead trees which she so keenly desires and which are an integral part of the original architecture vision of our 1930s estates. Mr Chairman, if trees are being introduced where they've never existed before, in the urbanised streets of Surbiton, Merton, Wandsworth, Brixton, Clapham, why is it that we cannot even maintain the number of street trees we already have in pre-existing grass verges in Epsom Yule, but also in Tandridge and Surrey Heath and other Surrey places where, following media publicity to this motion, I've been emailed by people citing similar stories? But, Mr Chairman, the motion not only seeks a more proactive tree planting policy, it also seeks greater partnership working to identify sites for new tree planting and a more proactive approach to the many outside sources of funding for new trees. I've already outlined the scheme which has been set up in Epsom Yule enabling the public funding of highway trees. If it worked, residents and voluntary groups would be paying £250 for a tree that would be monitored and maintained by the very people funding it. That is, if it worked. The Epsom Yule Tree Advisory Board has £12,500 for tree planting, but recently every one of the 40-plus sites identified on Surrey County Council land have been rejected, and that includes every single site in my... And that includes every single site in my division of Yule Court, Ori and Cuddington. And I put down this motion in part because I won't stand by and see the residential roads in my division declared free zones. That just cannot happen. We have to have a tree policy that enables and encourages Surrey Highway officers to be proactive, work with partners, and at a time of severe pressure on Surrey County finances, to take every opportunity to seek, accept, and use every donation, voluntary payment, and grant that is out there and available to us. Mr Chairman, as I said, I have a second for my motion in councillor Mike Goodman. I do apologise to him, as I don't come with the same universal appeal in this chamber as he does, and he ends up being the first Conservative since 2009, when I first came on this council, who has openly acknowledged that I have a good idea. However, I do believe he is a man committed to change and committed to tackling the environmental issues we all face. And this issue and my motion is not a party political one, it is one based on a common understanding of all groups of what needs to be done. Not only will Surrey County Council's public commitment to tree planting be more positive going forward, but its practical application, how it is translated into actions by Surrey Highways, will see more trees more regularly being planted in our towns and countryside. And we will see Surrey County Council, of which I am a member, with its partners, boroughs and districts, and private landowners, leading the way in meeting the government and Sir William Walts's national target of 12 million new trees. I hope we can support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr Goodman, your second. Would you like to speak now or reserve your right?
I will speak now. Well, all three motions today are about our important environment, and in seconding this motion, I'm going to concentrate really on the countryside, as well as some of the highways, but I will leave Matt and others who may want to comment on the highways issues. I'm a very passionate person about the environment, and I've been working on a commitment for this council to support tree planting in Surrey. I'm hoping to make a final announcement at the Royal Conference on Friday. A commitment from the council to facilitate the planting of trees to support our 2030 vision, that residents will live in clean, safe, and green communities, where residents embrace their environmental responsibilities. The UK government have announced it wants more than 10 million trees to be planted across England, and it would create 60 million funds to assist this. This includes 10 million to plant at least 100,000 trees in towns and cities. I welcome this, but we must ensure that they are grown in the right areas and are maintained and are safe. The Woodland Trust, the UK leading woodland conservation charity, is aiming to plant several million trees in the next 10 years. To meet its aim, it's given away thousands of trees free to schools and communities to encourage tree planting. We are going to be working closely with the Woodland Trust, the National Trust, Forest England, Surrey Wildlife Trust, schools, landowners, districts and boroughs, and parish and town councillors, as we facilitate planting of trees in Surrey. Planting of hedgerows will be part of this plan, and we support the Surrey Wildlife Trust's Hedgerow Heroes project that they launched this year. In the UK, we have a stubborn 280 million trees, and Surrey is the most wooded county in Surrey, with 22% of its land growing trees. In fact, my own borough, Surrey Heath, is the most wooded council, not county council, council in England, at 40.6%, and Waverley just behind, at 40.2%. The trees that will be planted will provide a sentry of shade filtering water and air, and as heavy rain is likely to increase, play a part in controlling the flow of torrential water onto the ground. We must not underestimate the value of trees in protecting us from flooding and reducing the level of pollution and reducing noise. It's not good enough to plant a tree and forget it. We need to think about the children who will play under each tree a century from now. We need to think about the birds, the insects, and the animals that will live in that tree. Will they be the same as the wildlife we have in the county now, or do we have to provide habitats for new species? Our attention is not to just plant and forget. We will be working with Surrey Nature Partnership to make sure these trees reach maturity, supporting the management and biodiversity, of ensuring the county supports a network of sites and greater resilience to the inevitable climate change coming. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Goodman. I've got 12 speakers so far, and I do want to get to the third motion, so let's make it to the point, please. Mr Harmer.
Thank you, Chairman. Now we're getting down to nuts and bolts. What can we do to contribute to controlling the rate of change, the climate? I represent 34, 35 square miles of a bit of urban, semi-urban, and a lot of rural. Right now, I believe that I see more destruction of trees than creation of new trees. If I wanted to have a slogan, the first one I would have is "Save what we have first". People move out to the rural areas, and they get a nice big house, first thing they do is chop down all the trees, because otherwise they don't have the views. So there's a lot of that going on, huge amount. We could do worse than to make every tree in the county subject to TPO, Tree Preservation Order. Make that a standard. You can still, you know, if there's a tree that's sick or anything like that, you can chop the tree down, that's fine, but at least start off with a proposition that we keep what we already have. We should discourage the elimination of trees, the destruction of trees. What we should encourage most of all is the regeneration of ancient woodland. There's a lot of that in Surrey, and we know it works. We know it works because it survived until very recently, it survived us, the humans. So if we were to adopt a dual strategy, keeping what we've got, not destroying it, and it doesn't have to be like that. The Hinded Tunnel project involved the destruction of 20,000 trees. It's currently engaged in replanting 30,000 trees. That was the deal agreed at the public inquiry. So that could be built into planning agreements where there are large amounts of trees which are in the way, if necessary. But we need to have a mindset that says, we keep the trees we have, we plant some more in the right places. I do sympathise with Mr Kingston, as I do quite often, because I've had the same problem, actually. Trying to get a tree which is on highway land, very difficult.
Thank you, Mr Witham.
Thank you, Chairman. Could I be the first to congratulate Eber Kingston on having a good idea? And one that is supported, I'm sure, amongst many members of whichever party. It was mentioned earlier on all of the climate change and environmental issues that we can all have a small part to play. And Mr Kingston's statement that no trees have been planted on verges by Surrey Highways since 2004, unfortunately, or fortunately, I can disabuse him of that, because it's not true. And... In Epsom and Yule? I've missed a bit Epsom and Yule. I'm sure there will have been other examples, but in my division, in Lewyfield, in Fairlands, there were discussions with residents last year, and as a result, five new rowan trees were planted on the verge this year, at the beginning of the year, with the support of the residents, because they wanted to have them, they wanted to help, and therefore they agreed to water them in the early stages, to look after them. That discussion came out of concerns about parking, and the original request was, "We want bollards". Well, actually, the highways manager came with me to that location, and we discussed with the residents, rather than just bollards, which don't look very nice, how about some trees, which would help improve your local environment and achieve, hopefully, the same effect? And that's what happened. They were funded partly by Surrey Highways and partly through the local Members' Highway Fund that I was more than happy to contribute from. So we all have a part to play. It's only five, I can't talk in the millions, I'm afraid, councillor Goodman, but it's at least 10 million minus five.
Thank you. Mr Townsend.
Thank you, Chairman. I fully support councillor Kingston's motion. What is described in Epsom and Yule has happened to me in Ashdod. I'm similar to the previous speaker. I had some trees put in as a result of, we now have Ashdod Tree Wardens as part of the Residents' Association in Ashdod, and they, about a year, 18 months ago, did get some trees after considerable amount of work with the highways in the verges. However, in the last year, the whole, it seems to be a complete dog's breakfast now as to what the policy is with Surrey with the local district council. I think one of the stories being said is you need to worry about the wires or the cables or whatever is under the verges, and apparently, I think Surrey's got the kit and possibly won't lend it to Mole Valley or whatever. Apparently, the tree wardens are very happy to take on that responsibility and look after the trees. They were told they couldn't use the kit because they weren't Surrey people, so it seems to be a complete mishmash, as I think councillor Eber Kingston has said. It's more than one good idea that Eber has, actually. So what I'm also saying, and I back up my previous speaker about cutting trees down, I've had two major trees cut down in my division in the last three or four months. Nobody told me about them. In fact, the person that told me was a resident who was actually living nearby. Within the district council, and I think district councillors in Mole Valley will know who I'm speaking, we have two councillors have considerable knowledge in this particular field. And there is a view that those trees needn't have been destroyed, cut down, but could have been pollarded and looked after in different ways. So I am saying that not only is this policy wrong, but I ought to be talking, if you've got groups in an area such as the Ashdod Tree Wardens, you talk to them about what you're going to do with the tree, and you may not therefore cut it down, you may keep it. But also, if you want to plant a tree, there must be a much clearer policy and an agreement between both the district and the county. And I fully support Eber's notion. Thank you.
Thank you. I've still got 12 speakers, so I won't take any more. Mrs Turner-Stewart.
Thank you, Chairman. I fully support this motion, and thank you, Eber, for bringing it. I just wanted to reflect on a situation we have in Spelthorn. So nearly 25 years ago, a group of residents got together despairing at the loss of trees in urban areas that were dying and not being replaced. They formed a group of volunteers, the Spelthorn Tree Wardens, and they went about replacing and maintaining street trees, using mulch from local tree surgeons to protect the trunks from being stripped. And I just wanted to take issue with the point you made about the disconnect between the desire to plant trees and the actual reality on the ground, because our tree wardens have been working with Surrey Highways consistently to have tree pits dug. We've got a road that was planted in 2005 which leads up to the council offices. I may be a bit ambitious in this vision, but I always wanted it to look like the Mall. It's a very long straight road, it's nearly a mile long, and it's a line of London plane trees, which is looking absolutely glorious. So they would carry out utilities checks in conjunction with Surrey Highways and undertake the watering for the first year. So when you talk about your list of Surbiton, Wandsworth, Brixton, and Clapham, could you please add Staines, Ashford, and Leyland to that list? So yes, they went about planting footpaths, footways, copses on the greens, orchards in sheltered housing, and outside our churches and schools. So whilst I embrace the sentiment, I think we do have to have some recognition that Surrey Highways have been very, very cooperative when it comes to enabling tree planting, so... Thank you.
Thank you. Mr Beckett.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. As we all know, back in the 30s, when a lot of trees were planted in our areas, maybe not the right species were planted. We're a lot smarter, we're a lot more intelligent now, and new trees that are going to be planted, fingers crossed, will be of a much smaller, less root-bound variety. We have undertook in Epsom and Yule some underground surveying by radar, which the Borough Council actually paid for, on a very, very wide road going into the heart of Epsom. The report come back from Surrey, not one tree could be planted in that quarter of a mile stretch on both sides because of underground services. So although councillor Kingston has mentioned the width of the verge, we're also getting hit with this underground service, a reason why we cannot plant trees. I had a rather nice email from Highways, 1,500 words telling me why we couldn't plant a tree. 1,500-word email highlighting the policy and why we couldn't plant any trees. It's already been alluded by councillor Kingston that local residents and the county councillors sitting here today have all contributed locally to put extra trees in our borough. There was a policy, I think, not so long ago, by the former chairman of Highways, which basically limited members using their allocation. And it was only from a backlash within this chamber that that policy was changed. So I have no trouble in supporting councillor Kingston's motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs Curran.
Thank you, Chairman. I too am very pleased to support Mr Kingston's motion here. The people of Buchham and Fetham West are extremely proud of their built environment and their tree-lined streets and the appearance of the village overall. And both villages are really lucky to have very proactive tree wardens. And I would like to say that the work of the Buchham tree wardens in particular has been remarkable, in that recently they celebrated the planting of their 200th street tree in the village. And this has been done in partnership with the Woodland Trust. I've been happy to support them through my allocation. But I have no doubt that planting 200 street trees has required an enormous amount of persistence and patience. And the poor Fetham Street tree wardens are running up against exactly the sort of problems that Mr Beckett has just outlined, and are finding themselves really frustrated at every turn. And yet, these two villages have myriads of suburban tree-lined roads with names like "The Grove" and "The Glade", which by their very implication should be and have been tree-lined. But trees do die, don't they? They reach the end of their natural life like any other living thing, and they need to be replaced, they need to be managed. So I would just say that when we do get round to making a more proactive policy for our street trees, Chairman, that we look at a more enlightened view of planting trees, maintaining trees, and also replacing trees for the appearance, if nothing else, of our lovely streets.
Thank you. Mrs Muir.
This is a red-letter day for councillor Kingston. I agree with him too. I kind of think that David Williams, who lived in Epsom, came up with his computer says no character from this situation, because we actually can't get a tree planted in Epsom. It is the most densely populated county. Our roads are highly congested. We need to have those trees. We're actually largely going for replacement trees. It had trees. We've got the money, we've got a fantastic tree advisory board, Tina's run events to secure money for these trees, and we really must have these trees, and particularly as we've been discussing the environment today. But I'm also particularly interested, as everyone knows, in mental health issues, and we know that this kind of addition to the environment is extremely important for that. So for that reason and many others, I completely support councillor Kingston's motion.
Nice to have first at this meeting. Thank you. Mr Tim Evans.
Turn it off again. Thank you, Chairman. I'll be very brief. I think two points. One is that it seems to me that we must support this motion, because actually planting trees, having trees, is the biggest, biggest possible way of stopping carbon emissions. They actually absorb all the carbon dioxide, they're much more important than anything to do with fossil fuels or anything else. So I support it on that grand scale. If we could persuade the Brazilian government to do something different, that would be helpful, but that's where it really needs to be done. But on a much more local basis, it seems to me that my experience is entirely different in Spelthorn from that of all the people who live in Epsom and Yule. I have residents who keep beseeching me to get the trees cut down because the roots are going through under their walls and they're disturbing their houses. And rightly, in my view... And rightly, in my view, the Surrey County council officers say, we're not going to do that, we never take a tree out unless it's absolutely diseased or broken. So all the trees that we've got stay there. As Claire Curran says, we have a road called Birch Grove, it's full of birches, they're the wrong birches, they were put in the wrong, they were too big and they were put in at the wrong time. Nobody in Birch Grove can get rid of the trees and all the pavements are broken because of it. So you have to bear in mind what you want. Do you want a tree or do you want a pavement? So I think the first thing which we need to do is to stop cutting trees out, but I think we do. And I was really surprised to find that all over the rest of the county, that is not the case. The second thing, of course, is to build, to put trees in, in places that are not necessarily on the verges. If we can, yes, but there's actually much more on private lands than they need to be done. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. It's the ninth of July, 2019, approximately eleven fifty, and I have taken my blood pressure. I totally agree with councillor Kingston's motion. You've got another first today. I also, I mean, the tree advisory board in Epsom is amazing, and we haven't had any trees planted, he's absolutely right. I support them totally, and in fact, they've had my salary as a Borough councillor to supply trees that they can't supply, which is ridiculous. They've had my salary each year. I do so agree with councillor Harman about having preservation orders on trees. In my district, I am so privileged to have the Centennial Wood, which is the only one, as you know, in England. And we are having hundreds and hundreds of trees planted every year, which is just amazing. On the other side of the road, I have a golf course which I shall not name. They chop down three hundred trees to plant, to build a reservoir. They chop down trees weekly, and I mean weekly, which is an absolute travesty. So this needs to be stopped, and at the moment, there's no way of stopping it. So I do believe that we should have a preservation order on all trees. Of course, it should be, there should be fluidity in it, you don't want to keep every single tree that's there, but most of them we need to keep. There is a problem with underpavements, and I have suggested, and I hope councillor Kingston, you know, in this feeling of friendliness and amicable, as we have today, I've suggested to the planning department that where we have areas where we can't plant trees, that they consider insisting that trees are planted on the boundaries of new developments, so that the canopy of the tree will overhang the pavement, and we know that it won't interfere with any cables or sewers or anything at all. So I would hope that he would take that on board and perhaps push that forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Four more speakers. Mr Manett.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I just want to say that Mr Kingdon gave the digital measurements, I'd just like to paint the analog picture. One of the biggest problems, if not the biggest problem, in certainly Epsom and Yule and Elbridge, which is shifted by the same highway officer, is the fact that we, the officer quotes continuously, which most members may not be aware of, the two-buggy rule. And the two-buggy rule says that you can't have a replacement tree, not necessarily a tree, but a new tree, you can't have a replacement tree even unless the measurements allow two ladies with children's buggies to pass each other behind the tree. Clearly, you know, that relates to the digital measurements that Mr Kingdon gave. And I have a road, Nightingale Road, which has all got tree, nice trees, it's a modest house road, but people are very fond of their trees there, as they are elsewhere. And every time a tree dies, which unfortunately not been very many so far, but the ones that have died have been taken out by the council on the grounds, some grounds, they can't have a replacement tree, because you can't get two buggies passing behind a tree. We need to abandon this rule, and then that will considerably ease things. And I'm bound to say, you know, if we go around my area and the Mulzie area generally, we've got big conservation areas, a lot of them have got pavements with, in fact, they've all got pavements with trees in, and you can't, as it stands at this moment, get two buggies behind most trees. So it's a ridiculous situation to keep pursuing. In fact, where I live, on the Walton Road, the pavement is so narrow, it's very difficult even to wheel one buggy, not that anybody's asking for a tree on that. So let's have a bit of common sense on the situation. If there's a tree there, I mean, I've never seen two ladies fighting each other to get a buggy past each other behind a tree. So, you know, this just shows how silly the rule is. Thank you.
Also silly for men, don't forget, councillor Manett. Men push buggies too.
Thank you, Chairman. I, of course, also support the motion from councillor Kingston. Sorry, I've got a bit of a call. I'm going to start by saying I'm a little bit surprised that all the surprise officers are about agreeing with councillor Kingston. He always seems to me to talk a great deal of sense. Perhaps you haven't been listening carefully enough, and that's just listening more carefully in the future. I'd like to bring up a specific tree point, which I'm slightly surprised also that hasn't been mentioned by other members, because I get a lot of complaints about it from my residents. This is that when a street tree has to be cut down by Surrey, instead of removing it completely, at the moment, the policy is to cut it off and leave a stump about two feet, three feet high. This, of course, is not good for the street scene, and there's more and more of these trees appearing south Farnham and south Waverley. And it gives the impression to our residents that we really don't care that much about trees. So I think when we do this review that councillor Kingston's calling for, we should review that policy. Now, I do understand, of course, that all the problems to be with the cost of all this, but I would hope that Surrey will now talk to the Borough Councils, and in our case, Farnham Town Council, about what contribution they could make. Farnham Town Council has an outside workforce that could contribute to this and could perhaps do the job more cheaply than Surrey can do it. So that's the thing I would appeal for in this review of policies, that you review this, this idea of just cutting down and leaving these ugly-looking stumps. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Harrison.
Thank you, Chairman. I think next to potholes and parking, this is the issue raised most frequently. When I signed off being group leader and I had quarterly meetings with the chief executive, she asked me, well, just for some general comments, and I said, if you can address the tree policy, that would be very helpful indeed. And I think this motion shows the support around the entire council for that, and I'd encourage that. I'm disappointed that the relevant portfolio holder for Highways hasn't spoken, maybe he's due to. But I want to draw to its attention the Highways Act 1980, section 142, which goes on for two pages and has been pointed out to me by officers over the years. We only grant licenses to owners of the properties immediately alongside that property, so if residents want to get a collective scheme together, you've got to get all of those to sign the license. The license has to be annexed to the deed, according to the policy. The costs of granting a license are to the account of the resident. Now, can you grant a collective license or do you have to grant individual licenses? You have to notify the council if you sell that property and who the owner and responsible person might be. There's a requirement for landowners to remove those trees if asked to. There's an indemnity clause, and I suspect residents who go ahead with this just ignore that, because it is really impossible to get your own household insurance to cover that particular indemnity. The survey of utilities has been mentioned, and that can be an issue in areas. And what is very clear is that some areas of the county, some divisions are being treated very differently. So I would call for a common policy and a way of overcoming these issues. And later in this meeting, we're due to look at the Member Officer Protocol, and I will just point out one area. Officers can assist members further by understanding their problems, looking for solutions and avoid focusing on obstacles. Let's bear that in mind as we move this along. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr Harrison. And finally, Mr Furness, so we've had the cabinet member for Environment and the cabinet member for Highways. Mr Furness.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, originally, I was very supportive of this motion because it takes a very good idea broadly across the whole county council about the planting of trees on our estates and land we manage. But sadly, in many cases, until I heard councillor Kingston's opening remarks, it seems to focus primarily only on highways, a topic which we had an open debate on in the Epsom and Yule Local Committee not too long ago, where we raised a number of these points, and I gave a number of answers, which sadly are not reflected in his motion. Much of the historical issues that councillor Beckett has mentioned are quite correct. You've acknowledged that we've been planting the wrong trees in the wrong places historically. We do have the issues with utilities as well as a constraint. However, I would just like to refer to the points of the motion, if I may. On point one, members will be pleased to hear, in highways alone, we have already started reviewing this policy. It started in April, as I mentioned at the Epsom and Yule Local Committee. Councillor Kemp has reminded me that he did in fact allow members to use their allocation for the planting of trees where appropriate as well. We are already identifying funding, we've investigated the one that the government has recently announced, and we've already got partners who are asking to work with us on planting trees on the highway. And as soon as we can identify, which is what currently is going on, suitable locations, we will begin. And just very lastly, we have already started identifying and procuring different pavement material for where trees are planted, that they do not break up the pavement, but allow the tree to grow healthily. So, Mr Manett, I am supportive of the motion as it currently stands, but I think it's important for members to realise, a lot of this work is already going on. We had the debate publicly, it would be nice if it was acknowledged publicly, and I think that I have heard what members have said, we are starting to generate policy by committee at this point. I'll take the points away and make sure they're fed into the review we started a few months ago. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Mr Kingston, would you like to sum up?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. First of all, can I thank councillor Mike Goodman? His commitment to a new policy of more tree planting is genuine, I know that, I've talked to him. And I think there is going to be a change, providing, of course, we get the vote here today. He talks about it being planted in the right place and with long-term maintenance, and I actually feel that it's his job to deal with all the bigger ones, the grandiose schemes and whatever, because locally, councillors, tree wardens, tree advisory boards and residents are champing up the bit to plant trees and maintain them and look after them. And I think for every Denise Turner-Stewart and Keith Whitton with a good story, as you have seen round here, there are plenty of other county councillors who've come up against very difficult situations. Councillor Claire Curran, councillor Chris Tantin, councillor John Beckett, councillor Ernest Manett, and of course, my friends, councillor Chief Birdy Muir, and, or my newfound friends, councillor Bernie Muir and councillor Tina Mountain. I'm going to record all that and show my wife that somebody loves me. The point being that actually it is such a different picture, but mainly negative across the county. And I'm not here to knock the officers, because what they are doing is they are currently following the policy as they have it given to them, with all its guiding notes and its bits about utility and mobility and British standards and this sort of thing. And if we say they must provide solutions rather than problems, then what we must do is have a policy that gives them solutions, so that actually when they come to these things, they look for the positive and look for how things can be done. I am really heartened. I suspect all those people who've been treating me an ill mammy across the county, because they see what this thing is, that, you know, that they will be pleased. I have to say, and I tell you this, when I reply to them, I do reply to them saying, I am hopeful it would be passed, because I do believe there is a will to do it. And as I say, in my discussions with councillor Mike Goodman, I felt there was the political will to do it as well. So I hope we can all vote for this, and I hope that we can add to the measures that have been announced, and that soon we will be the tree-planting county of the country. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Kingston. So let's have a vote by show of hands. All those in favour, show hands and press yes, please. That's passed unanimously. Thank you very much indeed. So the final motion is standing in the name of Mr Jonathan Essex. Understanding Order 123, council has to decide if it wishes to debate this motion today. Does council wish to debate this motion today? Thank you. Mr Essex, do you have a second, though? Mr Robert Evans, thank you. Mr Essex, would you move your motion?
Thank you. This motion just pretty much does what it says on the tin. It's about managing our verges and countryside better, less cutting, better timed, less toxic weed killer, more biodiversity, more wildlife. Surrey County Council lets contracts to maintain our verges mainly to our Borough and District councils. We require verges to be cut to a certain height to not block drains or cut trees or mow wildflowers. But the schedules agree typically are for four cuts a year in urban areas and two cuts a year in rural areas. And these schedules, this cutting regime, seems to trump the commitment not to cut wildflowers until they've seeded. And secondly, why ban glyphosate? Well, it's toxic to wildlife as well as to plants. It's carcinogenic, a cancer risk to us too. But we spray it on our road gullies every year, and we also use it to paint tree stumps when we cut down trees. There are alternatives. Other councils have switched to products like foam stream. And perhaps instead of cutting down trees, as we've just heard, and painting them with weed killer as standard practice, we could use, which makes the stumps basically a wildlife desert and reduces soil biodiversity around it, we could dig up that stump and we could plant a new tree in line with a previous motion. Bees are important, but glyphosate, amongst other things, has been found to kill the bacteria in a honeybee's gut. And without wildflowers, bees will have less nectar. This motion looks at these two things together. It looks to a two-year period to phase out glyphosate and to set out guidelines for a review to include a pollinator action plan to govern our verge cutting. And this would send a signal of how we believe our environment should be valued here in Surrey. Alongside things like banning single-use plastics and cutting greenhouse gas emissions, we need not to ignore the small pieces of nature that we manage ourselves. So to sum up, we can do things differently. This motion could save money on how we cut big verges, but would require a little more care in how we treat weeds instead. So please support this motion to make best practice the way we do things across Surrey. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Robert Evans. Would you like to speak now or reserve your position?
I'll speak now if I may, Chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you, go ahead.
I will obviously, as seconded, be supporting this motion, although I do feel that, as amended, the amendment slightly weakens it and reduces this council's commitment to some of the key environmental questions it's raised. I'd like, if I may, colleagues, to highlight a couple of issues relevant to the motion, which I think ought to give us, if nothing else, some food for thought.
Sorry, Mr Evans, I'm interrupting. We're talking to the original motion at the moment. I'll introduce the other amendment, the amendment in due course.
Well, I'm still talking to, I'm gonna, all right, well, it depends whichever way you want it, because I'm going to talk exactly as I feel to it, but I'll talk later if that would make you happier.
That's sensible. Thank you so much. I aim to please. Thank you, we always do. So the motion is open for debate, and Mr Furness has got an amendment, apparently which has already been circulated. I want to make sure everybody's got that amendment. Thank you. So would you like to speak to that motion, Mr Furness?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Yes, a meeting of mine, I think, on the telephonia stove with councillor Essex around his original motion. He said one of us was the optimist and one of us was the pragmatist. I'll leave the chamber to decide which was which. We have tried to put a little bit of actual deliverables into this motion with this amendment. There are some very clear sort of grounds that we are putting forward. We do need to work with our partners in the districts and boroughs. It is important to note that they actually do this work on our behalf, under contract, and in some cases, at additional cost, because they choose on how to do their cuts. and in some cases, at additional cost, because they choose on how to do their cuts, the timings and so on. There is a commitment in there to trial more environmentally friendly alternatives. I'm very pleased to put this in, because I do work in the organic food industry as a day job. I understand the importance of bees. It's very difficult, for example, to get organic honey in the UK, because we do not have that level of organic land, and we still do a lot of conventional farming with chemicals. Most importantly, though, is we need to communicate why we're doing this with our residents. I'm sure there is 50% of people who would like more cuts of their verges to maintain a very neat environment, and then there's probably another 50% who would very much like to have them longer for the wildlife and biodiversity. So it's important that we do communicate what we're doing and why. I'm not promising, ladies and gentlemen, that this will be a money saver. In most cases, actually, the changing of the management actually increases the costs, particularly if you're reducing the number of cuts below a certain level. But I do urge you all to support this amendment. I am fully supportive of this, and I will do what I can to increase biodiversity on our highways verges. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Mrs Bramwell, you're the second, though. Would you like to speak now or reserve your position?
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to second the motion and reserve my right to speak. Thank you.
So, Mr Essex, are you going to be accepting this amendment or not?
Thank you. I'd like to accept this amendment, as a friendly amendment. On the understanding that the changes made are about how to deliver it in practice, both in the spirit and the content of the original. My understanding on the phone, speaking to Matt yesterday, was that we are one year into a four-year contract, so there's things which we can declare as guidelines at a Surrey County Council level, but we may not be able to definitely deliver them until a little bit later. But maybe if we work together across Surrey on this and on other things, that might be achieved.
Thank you. So I'll come back to Mr Robert Evans, who can continue his comments if he wishes.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be able to speak twice on the same thing. But I will not repeat what I said earlier on, but I would like to highlight a couple of issues relevant to this motion. Little point one B, where it says about highway verge cuts, where it's both safe and desirable to do. Many of us here, I'm sure, will have happy memories of the 2012 Olympics, and those of you who visited the Olympic Park in Stratford cannot, I suggest, have failed to be impressed by the wildflower display that was there. A year after that, inspired by the wildflower meadow, Rotherham Council installed, Rotherham in Yorkshire, installed an eight-mile-long river of flowers on its central reservation using wildflower seeds. This benefits colleagues' wildlife, the biodiversity plan of the borough, and reduces the level of maintenance. It's also visual aid, extraordinarily attractive. And you may like to see a picture of the central reservation in Rotherham, which also cuts down their costs, makes the central reservation something that people look at. I hope it's not a danger to traffic as people go by, which would be an appalling negative. But it may be something that we wish to look at. Councillor Essex referred to glyphosate, and in point three, I note that the amendment says that it will look, we'll look again at these, based on the results of trials, if cost-effective, so to do. And I do counsel caution on just using the financial idea here.
We have six speakers, and I've only got 15 minutes left, so I will not take any more speakers after these six. Mrs Muir.
Actually, I've put in more or less the same subject into the full council at Exmaneul Borough Council, which I hope we'll get cooperation with on that. I think this is an extremely important thing, and I would like to add to this, that I think that one of the issues can be that a resident may be against not cutting some of the curbs, because what's actually there is not attractive, and the, you know, CO2, the N2 has actually meant that very large weeds grow more vociferously and has drowned out the beautiful wildflowers that are there. So one of the things I'm suggesting is that we should go out and try and get each borough to perhaps go for crowdfunding for actually sowing the indigenous wildflowers to their area and get volunteers. It's a lovely way to get communities together to manage certain key areas. And with the reduction in cutting, which helps our beleaguered bees, wildflowers, small mammals and what have you, and birds, that with the reduction in cutting and with perhaps a borough-by-borough crowdfunding and volunteer programme to re-establish our local wildflowers, we can have those bee corridors, which helps our trees and fruit, fruiting trees particularly in many of our areas. So I hope that we will support this and also take it further borough-by-borough to actually establish and re-establish what was there prior to the vociferous cutting of curbs that has taken away most of our indigenous species.
Thank you, Mr Campbell.
Yes, it's Chapman, folks. Yeah, I'd just like to make two points. One is the virtue of what's going on in Surrey Heath, Mr Chairman, where we already have some central reservations planted out with wildflowers. And we're moving forward over the next year or so to expand that, being very careful about avoiding any damage to, any possibility of road safety problems, and also recognising the point that councillor Furness made, that many of our residents are still in favour of verges being very, very tidy. However, we will move forward and try eventually to convince them. I would say that my own experience is that I didn't cut our front lawn at all this year, and it's turned out I hadn't ever put down weed killer, and there's a terrific display of what I've rebadged as wildflowers rather than weeds. However, I have had a neighbour come along and ask if I was well, because he would come and cut my lawn for me. One more point, and that is about tree stumps. It was councillor Essex mentioning again. Just make the point that tree stumps do have an important ecological place, and that is in the life cycle of staghorn beetles. So those are beetles, I think they spend, the grubs spend several years typically in tree stumps, and they emerge at this time of year, actually, so you might very well see them. So there is a good reason to keep some tree stumps. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Chapman. Mrs Clack.
Thank you very much, Chairman, for allowing me to speak on this issue. And the reason I'm doing so is because in my very rural division, I have miles and miles of very narrow country roads. And it is quite right to, I do agree, that the wildflowers that grow there in the spring and early summer are very beautiful. However, there are often times when walkers, riders and cyclists have to escape from the main road because of oncoming traffic. We have a lot of traffic in our rural areas. And if they haven't got a verge to escape to, or they don't know what's in that verge insofar as the kind of rubbish that gets tossed out of cars these days and other vehicles, then that is a safety issue. And I would like this to be a pragmatic solution, so that we make sure that we apply the right policies to the right areas. And to do this, I've been talking to my parish councils, and this debate has been wildly debated across all of the parish councils in my division. And what I've asked them to do is to do an audit of the verges across their various villages, to say where they think actually we could allow verges to be unmaintained throughout the year, and where they do need to be maintained, then we can ask the county council to do so. Mole Valley is one of the very few councils where Surrey County Council is in charge of verge cutting. It's an enormous commitment from one end of the other to Mole Valley, but we do need to make sure that our roads are safe for people to be able to walk and enjoy, ride their horses and get off the main road where necessary, as much as allowing the wildlife to grow where that's possible as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Lee.
Thank you, Chairman. I promised the chairman of Whiteleaf Village Council yesterday that I would speak in favour of this motion, particularly as a declaration, she is a professional beekeeper, so it is with interest that she heard that we were talking about this today. Whiteleaf is not a rural community, it is quite an urban community, but we do have significant verges, particularly along the main A22 going southwards. And I have found out this morning that that actually was cut yesterday. The verges were cut back yesterday very badly, and I've already sent a complaint email about that, but it was yesterday, on the 8th of July. Now, the chairman of Whiteleaf Village Council assures me, and I had to write these down, there are marrows, yarrows and even orchids that grow locally on the grass troughlands about that particular area of Whiteleaf. So any improvement in the cutting regime, avoiding this period of the year, would definitely improve conditions for wildlife, for biodiversity. And Surrey wildlife in particular talks of these corridors to protect biodiversity. So I fully support this motion and hope I can go back and tell her that it passed.
Thank you. Mrs Lake.
Thank you, Chairman. I have a couple of minor problems with councillor Furness's motion, and I have had a quick word with him. We are an extremely equine county, and using as an example ragwort when we treat and contain, even though it says at the end in the most effective manner, the government states that ragwort should be dug up and burnt, and I think this is extremely misleading. It's simply, it's not important, but it is a poor example. So I think just removing the word ragwort, I think, could take us out of a little bit of an embarrassing situation, and I appreciate it that it's the run-up to the actual real meat of the motion. And it comes to item three, we're serious or we're not serious? And I'm serious, and I have problems, and I did respond on this one, is that to trial more environmentally friendly alternatives. A trial could be one little area, because it doesn't infer we're going to do the whole thing. And it talks about after one full cycle, we all know what that is, and then to look to reduce the use of glyphosate based on the results of these trials. That seems simple enough if we're not using them in other places where they can affect the trial. But here's the get-out-of-jail card, if cost-effective to do so. Well, I'm sorry, we're either going to do it or we're not. And this whole morning, we've talked about our environment, we've talked about our future, we've talked about the ethos that we want to run through everything, but we'll only do it if it's a cost-effective to do so. This is a major health problem, as we've heard before, where cases have been brought against authorities and large organisations, and millions of pounds have been won. So may I ask, if nothing else, the word cost-effective is removed?
Thank you. Mrs Curran.
This may be a small thing in the spectrum of council activities and operations, but it's clearly something which is of huge importance to our residents. This meeting has happened to coincide with the second urban cut of verges in Mole Valley, and this has brought forth a flurry, not of butterflies or bees, but of emails into my inbox about our policy and practice of cutting verges. And the people of Buchan and Fetham West, who I have already told you are extremely proud of their village environment, are not proud at all of what we do to the verges. And many of them are asking me to support a change to the policy. And when I look at our practice in cutting verges, it does remind me of a saying, which I'm sure we're all very familiar with, the poet Lydgate and President Lincoln. You can please some of the people all of the time, you can please all of the people some of the time, but you can't please all of the people all of the time. But what I think we achieve, perhaps miraculously, in this council is with our grass-cutting practice, we please none of the people any of the time. So I do think we need to make a really significant change to the way we approach grass-cutting. In my division, many residents cut their own urban verges. Many of others cultivate their verges in the way that Mr Chapman has cultivated his lawn this year. As I walk through the village, I do see orchids, poppies, cornflowers, buttercups and daisies, but I also see thigh-high brambles, and this morning, shoulder-high nettles, which are perhaps not as scenic or as attractive. So I do think we need to make a significant change to the way we have, a significant change to our grass-cutting policy. But it has to be flexible, it has to be appropriate, and it has to be desirable for what we have in the right place.
Thank you. Il faut cultiver notre jardin, eh? As Voltaire would say. Finally, Mr Harmer.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, first of all, it's clear from that that there is an urban solution and there is a rural solution. What I would like to know, though, is what's the definition of urban? Because what I think's urban isn't getting four cuts a year, believe me. But maybe it's because it's really rural. I wanted to tell you something, very briefly, experiences. One of my parishes has declared itself glyphosate free for the last couple of years, and we've been monitoring what happens to that. If we do come across Japanese knotweed, we'll have a major discussion, but we haven't done so far. Ragwort, we pull up when it's damp, we pull it up, and it comes out by the roots, and we put it in plastic bags, plastic bags, take it somewhere and burn it, and plastic bags. But, you know, that's the most efficient thing to do on the lines, because you don't want any of the seeds getting out. That's why you put it in the plastic bags. If you do that, it'll go, it'll be gone, not back next year. Also, one of the parishes has, about five years ago, requested that a particular road should not be verge-cut at all. And that's caused that road to be used with considerable caution by motorists and plentifully by horse riders and pedestrians. So that's an interesting approach which you might consider. And then the other point I wanted to make is that it's not just the insects, but the insects are part of a food chain which takes in the birds, and the urban people love the birds, they like to see them all the time. They have to feed on, I know you can give them bird seed all the time, but really, for some of the types of birds, they need the insects to feed on as well. So the pollinators, presumably not the bees that get stung, but the pollinators are also part of a very important food chain that we all love and want to keep. So there are some interesting issues around this that need to be thought through.
Thank you, Mr Harmer. So, Mr Essex, would you care to sum up your amended motion, please?
Thank you, and I'd like to thank the many comments, positive comments from across the floor. I think going forward, it is important that the guidelines be produced, recognise difference between the rural and the urban, as been mentioned. I wonder if it's possible, with your permission, Chair, that we might remove the words such as ragwort, as it doesn't change the substance of the motion, but it hopefully will avoid any confusion should people Google ragwort and Surrey County Council, and this is what comes up at the top of their search. Because the intention here was not to mislead the public, but to give an indication of what the constraints, and I think that Matt Furness wanted to add here. In terms of councillor Clack's comments, I mean, this motion was focused on the verges we maintain. Going further and suggesting some are not maintained or maintained by other such parishes maybe is something which we could also cover in our guidelines. And certainly councillor Chapman, I agree with you that we should leave tree stumps as long as we don't paint them with weed killer to kill off all those staghorn beetle grubs that hide inside. And finally, there was a note about the phrase cost-effectiveness. In my view... In my view, in its current place, at the very end of a motion that sets out its purpose to manage verges for wildlife, not its purposes to save money, that phrase is okay. Because I think in its context, that phrase cost effectiveness is about making the process cost effective in how we overall manage our verges and our transport system for wildlife. So if we think of cost effectiveness as looking at the cost and looking at the effectiveness, then I'm happy with that wording. Because I accepted the amendment, and I accepted it in the spirit as well as the wording.
Thank you, Mr Essex. And in the spirit of that as well, I'm prepared to delete the words as ragwort, so such as Japanese knotweed in the most effective manner. Mr Furness, is that agreed? Thank you. So I will put the vote then for this. Please vote yes and raise your hands if you are in favour of the motion. Thank you. All those against? And all those abstaining? Thank you. So we have 63 yes, no, nos and four abstentions. The motion is passed. Thank you very much. Moving to item nine, revised member officer protocol on page 25 of the agenda. I call the leader of the council to introduce the report.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. And it genuinely be very encouraging to see the degree of consensus across the chamber this morning on some really important issues. Indeed, I look forward to the same consensus when I come to present the budget. And this next item, Mr Chairman, is indeed all about collaborative and respectful working. It's important that members and officers, you know, do work together as a team and understand the boundaries in which we should all operate. The revised protocol, I think, is the work, I believe reflects the work of the focus group, individual interviews and a thorough review ably led by councillor Kingston on the PBDC. I think it's clearer, simpler, shorter and indeed more appropriately focused. So members will have the opportunity, Mr Chairman, to go through this in more detail at a future member seminar, but in the meantime, I ask the council to endorse the protocol for inclusion in the constitution.
Thank you, Leader. The matter is open for debate. Mr Harrison.
Thank you, Chairman. I really do welcome this. It is very well constructed, the wording is very balanced, reasonable and it's very effective. Can I say that the previous member officer protocol, which I from time to time unearthed, if I was particularly frustrated about an officer not communicating with me, and I pointed it to them, it was complete blank. The officers had no idea that this was there, and frankly, it didn't really help me get an answer usually. But it's, we must make this effective, we must roll it out. There's obligations on members and there's obligations on officers. It's very well balanced, I fully support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Kingston.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I do, I'm going to vote for it, and I thank members of the Policy, Personal and Development Committee, who spent a lot of time listening to things that I would like to change, and they accepted some of those, and I think it's made it better. My only worry is that in its desire not to sound as though it is demanding, not to sound as though it is telling, there might be too many saddles in there, and some of my colleagues might not understand what it quite means. So hopefully there will be some training on this. I'm not sure, there is a suggestion that perhaps the officers and the members get together and do the training together. I'm not so sure that that actually works, because whilst members are quite comfortable with that, the whole point is that sometimes officers aren't comfortable when they're with members and they can't express things freely. And I also think with this document, we have to be aware, although members, sorry, although officers come across the range, it's far easier, shall I say, for those who come with perhaps greater authority in the council to do a bit of pushing back and resisting. It is not as easy for those who are actually not at that level. And therefore, it has to be understood, this applies to all, but also it has to become, which means that officers themselves must feel confident that they can use that at whatever level they are in the organisation. And I think that needs to be in part of their training as much as it has to be in members' training.
Thank you, Mr Kingston. Leader, do you want to come back on that at all? No. So we'll take that, is that agreed? Thank you, members. Moving on to item 10, the annual report of the shareholder board on page 37 of the agenda. I call you, Leader, again to introduce the report.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. And the recommendation is to note the annual report. It does contain a detailed description of the investment assets that this council currently owns, which now have a value in the region of £300 million and generates an annual rental income of £17 million. As I mentioned earlier, in relation to a point that Mrs Muir raised, since publication of this report, we have awarded a new contract to Surrey Choices, and we look forward to working more closely with them. And indeed, we have sold our interest in Future Gov, which, I'm pleased to say, generated a very healthy return for the council. So, Mr Chairman, the recommendation is to note the annual report, 2018-19, and I commend this to council.
Thank you, Leader. Motion's open for debate. Mr Button.
Chairman, I wanted to refer to the page 53, which refers to the Surrey Choices element of the annual report. And commend the work that the organisation did at Hampton Court. But refer members to the final sentence of page 53, which I think is absolutely essential. Like it or not, there are a number of our services that Surrey Choices delivers which are somewhat outdated, resemble day services that look like they were delivered in the 80s and 90s, and have not necessarily taken the opportunity either of relocation or refocusing significantly to improve the lot of their users. So I welcome the appointment of an associate director for learning disabilities, and I know that he, with renewed vigour, will wish to see that we commission appropriate modern services which genuinely provide employment and vocational opportunities, and genuinely provide a different kind of flexible, community-based support. So thank you, Chairman, for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you. Dr Povey.
Thank you, Chairman. I wanted to ask about the municipal bonds agency, where we have an investment of £450,000. I think when this was set up, it was originally anticipated that investors would have a preferential interest rate, whereas now the suggestion in the report is that that's no longer the case. In addition, it's also now saying that investors will have to bear the risk of default by other authorities. And I just wonder, under those two circumstances, whether this is something where we should maintain our investment.
Thank you, Mr Harrison.
Thank you, Chairman. I want to just briefly mention Holsey Garton Prophecy Limited, page 48. If you look at the return on the investment, if you strip out the interest payment, which is presumably money lent, lent by this council, the Holsey Stewart, that we could frankly put elsewhere to get a return, and presumably at market rates, then the dividends we've received, if you add up the three years, £1.6 million, £1.6 million and three quarters of a million, that's just about four, well, four million or so on the current balance sheet, admittedly lesser in earlier years, but that's £300 million, so £340 million. I think the return, about 1%, is, you know, pretty modest, and I think that's something, I think in resources and performance, we would like to take some action and look at the underlying economics of these investments. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. And finally, Mr Robert Evans.
Thank you very much. I'd like to ask the leader on page seven about Babcocks, the education provider, which the council's contract for services with Babcock came to an end earlier this year. And then I note that about the same time, Babcock 4S had been sold to Strictly Education. Did the council investigate other possible providers, or did the contract go out to tender, or did Strictly Education receive it automatically?
Thank you. Leader, would you respond to those comments and questions, please?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Yes, I entirely acknowledge Mr Button's point, and I sort of gave a bit of a hint to that in an earlier response to Mrs Muir. I think if you look at the business plan for Surrey Choices, you will see exactly that, which is a plan to transform the way in which the day services are delivered and to expand the range of services in the way in which those are. So I think we all recognise that Surrey Choices needs to move forward with that plan, and I think under the current chief executive, there's a very real prospect that that will happen in short order. In relation to Dr Povey's point about the municipal bonds agency, I think it is fair to say that, before my time, but I don't think it has worked as originally intended. I think it is appropriate that we do review our continued involvement in that. I'm aware that there have been some discussions around future investment in that organisation from a third party, so I think we need to have a look at that. I mean, it is an alternative, theoretically an alternative option for us other than to borrow from the Public Works Loan Board, and I think that's why we were originally involved. But I think it does need review. Mr Harrison whispered over my shoulder from the cabinet member for finance was your summary of, the numbers didn't include the interest arbitrage that the council receives, i.e. the markable interest that it charges to Holsey Garton. I think the challenge, though, generally, more generally, is that where we borrow funds to buy these properties, you know, and we are paying interest on that borrowing, the net return is always going to be around 1% or not a lot more. I mean, that is the challenge. So, yes, we get some level of revenue and potentially we get some capital growth, but it's for that very reason that we have paused any investment, certainly out of county. You know, if we do invest going forward, I think it must be within the county of Surrey to promote our economic development for businesses that want to come and operate from here. So I'm very happy, or Mel is very happy, to spend hours with you going through the detail, but your point is right, although I think some of the numbers are not entirely accurate. But I think, again, it goes to the review, there will be a paper coming to Cabinet at some point regarding our investment strategy going forward. As you know, we've now created the Strategic Investment Board, which is in public, and there'll be much more transparency in terms of what we do and indeed the return from those investments. In relation to Mr Evans's question around Babcocks, I was just trying to remember whether we have had a cabinet paper already or, yeah, we have had one already. Yes, there was certainly a review of options, but those options were very limited in truth. We didn't have a large range of interest in that, our shareholding in that company. So it was, I hope we'd have to remind, I'll have to remind myself anyway, it depends what the cabinet paper said, but we can certainly do that.
Thank you, Leader. So are we agreed? Thank you. Item 11, the appointment of a monitoring officer on page 67 of the agenda. I call the leader to introduce the report.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. This report recommends the appointment of Paul Evans as the monitoring officer for Surrey County Council from the date that he actually joins the council. Mr Evans, as you'll see from the paper, holds the monitoring officer position currently at the London Boroughs of Merton and Richmond, as well as heading up the South London Legal Partnership. That is not dissimilar, but far more advanced to the Orbis Public Law Partnership that we have previously or currently involved in. And indeed, that partnership has 120 lawyers, you never get too many lawyers, and support staff, and supports five boroughs. So in terms of the size of the role that he currently has, that supports over a million people in that area, not dissimilar to the county of Surrey. PBDC have had the opportunity to interview him and indeed support the recommendation, and I ask the council to do the same.
I think that one we can agree. Can we agree, council? Thank you. Moving to item 12, committee appointments. I call the leader of the council to introduce the item again.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. As you'll have seen, the proposal is to appoint Dr Phil Chapman as chairman of the Adults and Select Committee, following the request from Geoff Harris to step down from that role. Can I thank Geoff Harris for his significant contribution, not only to that committee, but to this council generally, and also to thank him for continuing with his role as chairman of the local committee at Rye Gate Abanta. And we wish you and your wife well in terms of the current issues. So, Mr Chairman, I thank Dr Chapman for agreeing to take this on at short notice, and I think indeed he will be an excellent chairman.
Thank you, Leader. So are we agreed, council? Thank you. Item 13, the report of the cabinet, page 69 of the agenda. I call the leader once again to report the meetings of the cabinet, held on 28th May and 25th June 2019. Leader.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I beg to move the reports to cabinet, held on the 28th of May and the 25th of June 2019.
Thank you. I call paragraph, paragraph A. Paragraph B. The motion is that reports of the meeting of the cabinet on the 28th May 2019 and 25th June 2019 be adopted. Is that agreed? Item 14, cabinet minutes. I now turn to the final item of the agenda. No notification of questions, so that brings the meeting to an end at 12:45. Thank you.